Hi, good afternoon. Welcome to the Beverly Hills School Board Meeting on July 14. It is now 5:01 PM and we are going to call this meeting to order. To start us off, I'd like to ask Dr. Horvath to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Please rise. Put your hand over your heart. Ready to begin? I pledge allegiance. To the people of justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Horvath, and welcome once again to our school district. Okay, we're ready to start our meeting. A report from closed session, Dr. Brigg.
Thank you. There was no action in closed session.
Okay, our meeting, the order of the meeting is a little different. We're going to start off with staff presentations first. And so just for those members of the public watching, I just want to let you know that we are going to come back to public comment after staff presentations. And so at this point, I'm going to defer...
Mrs. Cracher? I'm sorry, can you just review the agenda?
Oh, please. Thank you, Mrs. Cracher. Thank you so much. Yes, please, may I please have a... Thank you, all second that?
All second.
And all those, I already seconded, please? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. And so with that, I'm going now to defer to staff presentations and we're going to start with Keget.
President Hacker, members of the board, tonight we have our annual debt presentation from Chris Hyatt from Keget. I'm going to turn it over to Chris. This item will come back to you on the agenda just a little later for acceptance and approval, but we're going to go ahead and do the report right now. So, Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
I don't know if Mrs. Hyatt is with us, is she?
I believe she's presenting. Chris, are you there?
Chris, we cannot hear you. Okay, so maybe Mrs. Hyatt has to come back on the line because we seem to be having some problems listening or hearing her on the other side. So, I don't see anyone.
We can go on to the other reports and we can come back around to her if you like, President Hacker.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roach. Let's see, so we are now going to have, we're going to move to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee and they have for us the Measure E Annual Report Presentation to the Board. So, is it Rich Baron who I see on my screen who will be presenting? Welcome. Rich, you have to unmute yourself, please.
Okay, I'm going to open it and then defer it to Richard. Is Richard Schreiber on? Is Dick? Okay, so I'm going to defer to Richard and Mary Wells who actually did the audit, but they did a great job and compared to last year, it was pretty awesome report. And, you know, we went over this. There was a major improvement and I'm going to, they did a lot of work on this, so I'm going to defer to Richard Schreiber and Mary Wells who did a tremendous amount of work on this. Is Richard around? Is Richard Schreiber on the line or no?
Initially, I had seen him. I don't... So, Richard, if you're with us, can you unmute yourself, please?
And if not, Mary, would you like, would you take, you know, Mary Wells? Unmute yourself. Mary?
Hi, this is Mary. Hello, everybody. So, I can do Richard's report or why don't I start with BH and then we'll see if we can capture Richard? Does that sound good with everyone?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that Richard is not trying to get in because that sometimes happens. So, I'm not sure who's responsible for that, but if we can let him back in the group, that'd be...
He's practically in the meeting, so I'm not sure why he can't unmute himself, but he is definitely in the meeting.
Oh, great. So, we just need him to unmute.
Mary, do you want to do BH first?
Sure. Would you like me to start?
Yes.
Okay. Well, this is the CBOC's second annual report for the 385 million general obligation Measure BH bond for the initiative vested on 2018. And the Citizens Oversight Committee met six times throughout the year and the Audit Committee reviewed the district program's bond fund expenditures and reported its findings at the meetings. The district completed both the financial audit and the performance audit. The audits were performed under the guidelines under Prop 39 and the generally accepted auditing standards. The performance audit, which was done by Moss Adams, was issued on December 13 of 2019, which I believe you've all been aware and have read. And Moss Adams reported that they had reviewed the 2018 Measure BH construction bond expenditures reported for 2019 and verified that they were used, that the funds used were set forth in the bond program ballot language and the district provided sufficient supporting documentation and explanations for all the selected samples. So, there were no exceptions taken, which was wonderful news. And the CBOC was very pleased with Moss Adams. For the financial audit, the financial audit focused on the accuracy and the fairness of the financial statements prepared by the district on Measure BH Building Fund. And the firm's opinion on the financial audit was that the financial statements were presented fairly in all material respects and the respective financial position of the Measure BH bond was as of and for the fiscal year, for the year ending June 20, 2019, and the respective changes in the financial position for the fiscal year then ended in accordance with the accounting principles, the generally accepted accounting principles. During 2018-2019 fiscal year, the Measure BH Building Fund expenditures were 1,350,000 and the balance at, as of June 20, 2019 was 158,255,000. I'm sorry, sorry about that. The financial auditors also considered the district's internal control over the financial reporting. During the test of dispersments, it noted that four out of the 18 invoices were not paid timely for fiscal year 2019. And the district's response was that these were incurred prior to the funding of Measure BH and removed over by journal entry. Overall, the CBOC was very pleased with the work of Moss Levy for the financial audit. The comments for the CBOC for this annual report. Last year, there was an annual report done by the CBOC, but there were no expenditures. So, really, this is the first audit that's been performed for Measure BH with bond proceeds and its expenditures. And the financial auditors reported that there were invoices that were not paid timely. However, I understand that even though this was moved over as a journal entry, the CBOC's concern is that because of fiscal year 2018 and fiscal year 2019 for Measure E, there's a similar report of invoices not being paid timely. So, in light of the fact that Measure BH is just getting started, the CBOC strongly encourages the district to implement the financial auditor's recommendations that they set forth in the Measure E audit for overall best practices. And if Rich comes online, he can go over those, but I think you guys have also already been over these with the audits with Moss Levy, which were things such as date stamping and tracking the payments as they go. With regards to, I guess that's actually all for the financial audit. For the, overall, the CBOC is concerned about the oil wells remediation project and it's not having a comprehensive budget. And I think that's probably one of the bigger concerns that we can see down the road and that we just really wanted to highlight because without that comprehensive budget, we feel it's really just difficult for the district to perform its really critical job of controlling the costs and seeing as the project gets through to completion. Without a comprehensive budget and without having defined parameters of a budget, it's very difficult for things like unplanned expenses similar to with the MTA expenses in the Measure E bond. That could be Richard. Does everybody hear that?
Mary, I'm here now.
Okay, hi, Richard. I'm just finishing up the BH annual report.
Okay, I'll take over from there.
Okay, as soon as I finish this last statement, then I would say, maybe you should mute for now. I'm not sure. Do you guys all hear the feedback?
I think Richard is calling in from Mars or something. Richard, can you please mute yourself?
Ah, better. But I hope we didn't lose him.
I think he actually left the meeting.
I think he did too.
Maybe continue, Mary, until he comes back.
I think he'll come back. But the main concern really with the oil wells is that by not having that budget and not having those parameters to work from, even though their estimates are to the best extent that is able to kind of capture all those costs for the different oil wells and now it appears that there are more oil wells on the horizon or potentially more, that to really get the benefit of the funds for Measure BH to be applied towards actually building the buildings and, you know, refurbishing those buildings instead of them getting deferred to expenses that are very difficult to control. So, having that budget hopefully could help manage those costs in a better way so that more money goes to the actual building of the buildings. And then a last comment would be that the CBOC recommends that the district provide the community with more updates on the site. So, maybe it could be better organized by projects or updated in a way that people can access it and get more information on that website, which is a recommendation, but as well, we know you guys have limited resources and limited time. So, but it is definitely something that we think would be very helpful. That is the rest of the report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schreiber is on the line. Did he have anything he wanted to add to the report?
I see him available, but I don't know if he's on, he's muted.
I see that, Mrs. Marcus. Mr. Schreiber, if you're with us, did you want to add something? Can you unmute yourself and signal to me? Okay, so we're going to move on. Oh, he's calling in.
Yeah.
Otherwise, see him. Okay. So, Rich, anything else on your end?
Did Dick get through?
He's trying.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know why I got dumped off. I got knocked off through the internet, but I definitely, once again, want to thank... I have arrived.
Okay, I'm going to mute myself so Richard can speak.
Okay. Hello?
Hi, Richard. This is Mary. I just finished the BH report.
I'm getting all kinds of noise on my... Richard, Richard, you need to turn speakers off or...
Okay, so we're going to have to, Rich, you're going to have to take over or otherwise we're going to have to move on because we're having a terrible connection.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay. And, you know, because I missed part of Mary's presentation, so I wasn't, Richard was going to do it, but the report as submitted, you know, for Measure E, you know, I think, and Mary put out what, you know, what the CBOC and the Audit Committee Subcommittee has requested. You know, the report has been approved by the CBOC and presented to the board. And I definitely don't want to take too much time, but, you know, it's available for the public is I definitely want to, once again, thank Richard Schreiber, Mary Wells, and Jason Run for editing it and the staff, you know, of the district helping and supplying all the information. And, you know, these reports are available for anybody to review and if they have any questions, you know, just please, you know, let myself or, you know, anybody on the committee know and we, you know, I think we can move on, you know. But there's nothing really standing out strongly and if Mary wants to point anything out.
Thanks, Rich. I'd like to just go around and ask the board if they have any questions. And so we'll start with senior board member, Mr. Krishanian.
Thank you. I had no questions.
Mr. Margot?
I want to thank the CBOC for their work, ongoing work. We have two major multimillion dollar bond projects simultaneously. You guys are on top of these things and I appreciate it. And I think, Mary, we all do share concerns about the oil wells, so it's not lost on us. So, thank you.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes, I too want to thank each and every member of the CBOC. I, sometimes it's a little difficult to tell how important your work is, but we couldn't function with a bond program without you. So, thank you very, very much. Appreciate it.
Okay, before I go to Mrs. Walker Schuman, Rich, can you mute yourself, please? Thank you. Ms. Walker Schuman?
I agree with my colleagues. I think this is, it's not an easy task to go through all of the details of this type of work. It's not for everyone. So, it takes special skill and talent and I thank you for your commitment and for your time, you know, in taking public interest to heart and representing the community so well. So, thank you to the whole CBOC. It's a lot of work.
Okay, thank you for that. Mrs. Marcus?
Good evening. I'd just like to lend my support and the comments that were made previously. You know, these are volunteers. They're giving up their time and they are extremely dedicated and they're very concerned and watching over to see that things are running smoothly and that, so I just would like to thank them for their dedication and for the hard work that they put in. And I feel very confident that with their oversight, we keep everybody on board. And I think that that's an important point. So, thank you again for all your dedication and hard work.
Thank you for that. I just want to say thank you to the entire team for putting this together. I really do appreciate your commitment that you all make to, of course, have the CBOC function. I want to just acknowledge the comments made by Mrs. Wells that, you know, I do recognize the importance of having budgets associated with particular projects, but, you know, I hope the community understands that the oil wells are there and that they need to be remediated so that indeed these projects can be done in a safe and efficient manner. So, I think it's a little combination of both, but your comments are well taken. And so, I hope to soon convene, maybe this is something that Mr. Margot and Mrs. Walker Schuman can take back and communicate and try to work towards, you know, a goal of having budgets. I know it's ideal, but very necessary so that we can make improvements based off your recommendations shared with us tonight. Okay, is that fair? Thank you.
I would say that I think that the CBOC recognizes that very much so that the oil wells are part of what the costs are and that there's a real reason for the remediation and that there's a cost associated with it that's very difficult to manage. But trying to have, just having a comprehensive budget will help to try and manage the costs in the sense that they are manageable as opposed to not having that. So, we just recommend that that is a better step to have, to be able to allow you to manage them to the best way possible, understanding that they're a necessary cost and that they're a very difficult cost to estimate.
Understanding that.
And that's the main recommendation. And I'm sorry, I think also what Richard wasn't able to say, which would have started this off, is that the CBOC was also very pleased with both of the audit reports because there was such a vast improvement. And it was actually a very glowing report in terms of how well the district is doing in comparison to other districts and that they're just, you know, the improvements have been continual every year and they just get better with each year. And we are really happy about that and I think everybody, the district especially, should feel really good about that and it makes our job a heck of a lot easier. And, you know, it's something to be proud of.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your involvement, Mary and Rich.
I just want to make one more point if I could, just to comment that when you hear the words that this is on June 30 of 2019, remember the audit. Here we are at 2020 and the audit is for the previous year. So, next year, we will have an audit that pulls in 2020. So, in 2021, we'll be listening to an audit in 2020. I just wanted to point that out to everybody that they thought that this was behind the times or something. Thank you.
Yeah, and I just want to say that five years ago when I... Mr. Richard Schreiber, you're going to have to mute yourself. I'm sorry. Okay, we're going to move on because I don't think we can hear each other. So, thank you for being here today. And we're going to move on now to board, to Keget. I think Mrs. Hyatt's with us again?
I am, hello.
Hi, Mrs. Hyatt, how are you? Welcome back.
Thank you and I'm glad you can hear me now.
Yes, we can. So, please, the floor is yours.
Okay, let me pull up our presentation here. One moment. It won't share PDF, so let me open up the Word version. Sorry for the delay. Okay, here we are. Let me share my screen. Here we are. Okay, well, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here to make a presentation on the Debt Issuance and Management Policy Number 3470. It's one of your board policies that says that on an annual basis, the superintendent or designee at Keget will report on an annual basis to the board regarding debts issued by the district, including projected tax rates, bonding capacity, ratings, refinancing updates, and any other developments. So, I'll go through each of those points in this presentation. So, to start, the debts issued by the district, here's a short summary of the general obligation bonds outstanding that have been issued by the district from as far back as 2005 to the issuance we did last year, the refinancing. So, we have the original issuance amount and the amount outstanding as of July 1 for our total amount of bonds of five, just over 500 million. Scrolling down to the actual and projected tax rates. So, the tax rate for the last fiscal year, this was data released about a year ago, the 1920 fiscal year, was $123.93 per 100,000 of assessed valuation. The new tax rates will be released within the next few weeks, so we'll keep an eye out for that. In this chart here, we have a projection of where the tax rates will be moving forward. This does assume assessed valuation growth of 4% per year, which we realize will be affected by COVID, so we will update these projections as we get more information of the impact of COVID on real estate and assessed valuation in the area. We also have some delinquency data built in based on guidance provided by the Auditor Controller. And with that, you'll see that the tax rate is projected to remain about stable for the next fiscal year and then it will drop. And the reason for that is because that is when the next issuance of Measure BH bonds is projected to come in. So, this tax rate will remain somewhat more stable once the next series of bonds is sold. On bonding capacity, this is a statutory calculation on the amount of general obligation bonds that can be issued at any given time. The way it's calculated is the total assessed valuation multiplied by 2.5% and subtract out any outstanding bonds, which gives the district an available bonding capacity of just over 400 million. So, more than enough capacity to issue the remaining Measure BH. In terms of credit ratings, as you're all aware, districts are rated based on the tax base, finances, debt, and management of the district. And with that, the district currently has the highest possible rating from Moody's, which is a AAA, that's as of 2019, and a AA+ from Standard &amp; Poor's. So, those are fantastic ratings and it really speaks to the credit strength of the district. In terms of a market update, as you're all very well aware, COVID has had a huge impact on global markets, including municipal markets. So, we have a few charts here to show you that impact. First, the number of COVID cases since January obviously has been on the rise. We also have the US initial jobless claims here on the right side. You can see a huge spike in March when COVID first started hitting the United States. And then here we have US Treasury rates. You'll see how prior to the pandemic, back in the late fall, January or so, rates were very stable and very condensed, but have since taken a huge dive here. You can see how rates were very volatile in the month of March. They've since stabilized at a low rate and this is because investors have been flocking to US Treasury rates and to municipal bonds as a safe haven asset. In terms of refunding opportunities, the district has always taken advantage whenever there's an opportunity to save taxpayer dollars. So, because you've always taken advantage of those, there aren't any at the current time. New developments for California bond financings, there haven't been very many new developments. I think the latest thing was released last February, so February 2019, and it relates to continuing disclosure, which are the required... and it relates to continuing disclosure, which are the required filings that districts must make to investors on existing bonds. District staff is aware of these changes and basically it just added two new material events, meaning that whenever these two events occur, the district would just need to inform Keijen so we can make a filing for investors. So whenever there's an occurrence of a financial obligation, if material, or if there's any sort of default or modification of terms, just let us know and we'll make that filing. But Mr. Roach is aware of these changes. So nothing new to the district. And finally, the, the board policy does require a statement on compliance with post issuance requirements. So these are the requirements to make sure that you don't run into any IRS issues based on your outstanding bonds. So this includes things like making sure that adequate records are retained and always monitoring the, the amount of money that needs to be spent and making sure it's spent by the, by the appropriate time period. So the district does regularly consult with bond counsel and Keijen to make sure that these post issuance requirements are met. So you are in good standing at this point. And that's all we have for you, short and sweet. Just wanted to make sure that your report met the requirements of your board policy. Are there any questions?
Okay, so we'll go to the board. We'll go around. Mr. Khashanian.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Margot?
No questions. Thank you, Chris and Keijen, for the presentation and helping us meet an obligation.
Mr. Spitz?
It's a good report in all respects, and thank you very much.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yeah, I agree with my colleagues. Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm happy with the content. Thanks for joining.
Mrs. Marcus?
Oh, I love the fact that we're up there at AAA and AA+. I think that's a nice thing to hear. And I'm very, very, I'm sure that it's being well handled and thank you for the report. Very concise and I liked it and could understand it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Hyatt, for being here with us tonight and for presenting and for the content, the material. And I don't have any other questions or comments. Thank you again. It's good to see you. Good luck. Okay, we're moving on. We are now going to move on to the agenda hearing and public comment. So we have all different, we all have different letters to read into the record. I just want to state that we had over 37 letters submitted. Many of them are repetitive and, and the content of, of, you know, the messaging. So we are going, we selected a few and, you know, we, again, your letters, if you're written to us, your letter will be entered into the record and will show up in our minutes at the next meeting. We have read your letters. Again, we appreciate the time that you've taken to write comprehensive communication to the board. It matters to us what you think. And so please know that we take these seriously. And again, we're not ignoring you. We're simply trying to move our meeting forward. Okay, so with that said, I will ask Mrs. Marcus to go first. Just because of the order, I will then ask Mr. Margot, Mr. Spitz, Mrs. Walker Schuman, and I'll go last. Thank you.
I'm ready. Okay, first one is a subject on the hybrid, a comment. Options are given for those who want online only. Those who want a hybrid are being totally ignored and denied options. We are in Beverly Hills. Why is it that Long Beach and other districts are able to open and our district can't give us that option? Many parents want the 3.0 homeschooling. Have those teachers, have those teachers go to Hawthorne and give them that homeschooling with an empty classroom. For those who want a hybrid, let them go to Horace Mann and have a hybrid option at the elementary level. This was from Deborah Tirmey. Next one is on teacher safety. I have several teacher-related questions. First, with COVID numbers still rising, is the hybrid still a realistic option? Second, will the same teachers be teaching both the hybrid and the ILC classes? How will that even be possible? Finally, how safe are the teachers and what happens if they get sick? Are all class cohorts quarantined? Do they still teach the ILC portion? If they have to quarantine and it is part of their PTO or whatever, will they be reluctant to quarantine? Thank you. Alexandra Damsker. There is a letter here that is being not read. It's quite lengthy. And I just want to mention that there was a nice letter here from Jocelyn Broznik, but I'm moving on to the next letter. Comment, subject enrollment. We are unhappy with either choice for K-9 learning for this coming school year and would like to un-enroll our kids from the Beverly Hills Unified School District. How do we go about doing this? Thank you. Tobias Miller. And those are the four letters that I was given. Okay?
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Who's next?
Okay. Thank you for your hard work throughout these difficult times. I'm writing to express my utmost horror over the Beverly Hills Courier article regarding parents protesting that their children go back to physical school in the fall. It displays a shocking selfishness in these extraordinary times and a complete lack of regard for the lives of our teachers and staff. And I hope they have no influence on the board. There are many of us who moved to Beverly Hills specifically for the schools, those of us who spent thousands of dollars to live inside the Beverly Hills district. And while I am just as heartbroken as anyone that my son won't have a normal senior year of high school, this is not the world we live in. And what is best for all of us as a community takes precedent over what is best for my 17-year-old son, who doesn't even know what's best for himself right now. While it's true that children aren't affected by COVID as much as adults, schools are run and operated by adults, our teachers and staff. I'm not sure why parents are protesting their children's right to be in school without any regard for the risks on the lives of the people who run and operate our schools. The world looks to Beverly Hills because of its name recognition. And this pandemic is an opportunity for Beverly Hills as a community to take leadership and unite behind a strategy that provides our children with an education while we physically stay at home. It is absolutely unfair, as case numbers continue to skyrocket, to demand that our teachers and staff, many of whom have health problems themselves, or they have family at home with health problems, that some parents are demanding that they come to school to risk their lives and health when modern technology has given us other valid options for an education that keeps them safe and as well. COVID is a once-in-a-century kind of problem. Think about that for a second. Once-in-a-century. Losing one year of physical in-school education and almost two-decade-long educational journey of our children is not going to be the end of the world. One of our teachers or staff member losing their life or bringing COVID home to a family member, then they die, that is the end of their world. Will it take a million deaths for people to stop acting petty and selfish and start thinking about what's best for the community? Is best for all of us? Do parents in Beverly Hills really think so many doctors sounding alarm bells are just making up the severity of COVID? We are rapidly approaching a million deaths if we don't change our behavior. I mourn the loss of my son's senior year of high school. I mourn the lost thousands of extra dollars spent to move into this district for a high school experience that's going to abruptly end unsatisfactorily. But does my sadness justify endangering the lives of my son's teachers and staff? Wake up, Beverly Hills. You can be better citizens. You can do it. Please think as a community. When the history books write the tale of COVID, where do you want Beverly Hills to be in the history book? Let's write the story of a community that bonded together and found new ways to use technology to create educational experiences like Zoom student-led discussion meetings or Instagram science fairs. Let's embrace all of what technology has to offer until COVID is past so we can emerge from this pandemic together as a community and alive. From Tara Kittle. Okay. Virtual teaching. Do the right thing. Keep kids safe at home and allow teachers to teach virtually. I support this virtual model because it's what's best for our community at this time. Trissa Cheson. Couple more here. This is about returning to school. Hello, board members. I appreciate you taking the time to read this letter. I am an instructional assistant who has worked with the BHUSD family for over 10 years now. I am grateful for the experiences, teachers, students, and parents that I've had the pleasure of working with. I'm very much concerned about any kind of return to school. I am of a younger age group, but I do fall into the high-risk category with an immune system that has fought off two cancers and much more. For those of us who are not speaking up or afraid to, I want to be the voice for them. I 100% cannot return to the school environment until it is extremely safe to do so. I know many instructional assistants who are aligned in this viewpoint. I want to be as healthy as possible, as I wish for all staff, students, and parents. And the only way to do so is to stay at home. I cannot understand how the lives of our friends, coworkers, students, and so forth could be potentially jeopardized while containment of COVID-19 has not successfully happened yet. I care about each and every one of you, even if we have not had the pleasure of meeting personally yet. Let's keep each other safe, healthy, and most importantly, alive. Let's do our part of taking the utmost precautions and allowing the opportunity for everyone involved to take, sorry, to keep taking uninterrupted breaths. Please keep all staff in mind when making these choices. I want to get back to school as well, but not at the cost of potentially taking my breath away. Thank you for taking the time to read this and I hope you keep healthy and safe during these uneasy times. Alana Grayson. I have one more. I have been assigned to orate. And, okay, home learning. Dear BHUSD School Board, I am writing as a BV middle school parent. I support home learning and keeping every person in our community safe during the pandemic. As challenging as the Spring 2.0 was in terms of supporting my sixth grader, we had a wonderful experience with excellent teachers and staff members at BV. My one comment is this. As a family with two working parents who are both working from home, Monday through Friday from 8 to 5 and sometimes beyond those hours, there is little time and bandwidth to support my child and his academics during the work week. During the spring, assignments were posted Monday and due by Friday at 3:00. That created a tough home environment for all of us, even with the use of a tutor. My request is that students given flexibility in returning this week's work, a whole week, including the use of weekends or more, would help us navigate home learning at a much better pace. Thank you for your consideration. Kind regards, Barbara Oltek. And those conclude my letters. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Mr. Spitz and then Mrs. Walker Schuman?
I have two letters to read. They're both lengthy, so I'll try to get them over as soon as possible. The first one, Dear Superintendents and School Board, I thought about, I wondered what I wanted to write for a while. I thought about all the conversations I've engaged in since the last study session where it was decided that a hybrid model of instruction was off the table and that the district would be only planning for a home learning 3.0 program. I started writing an entire letter explaining why a hybrid model should still be on the table. Then I scrapped the whole thing. I scrapped it because it is apparent that the decision has already been made to flesh out the 3.0 option. The decision appears to have been made even before the study session took place, either individually or as a collective. While each of you has the right to arrive at a decision based on your own experiences and interpretations of a balancing of the interests, you must also be prepared for the scrutiny that comes with such a decision. While I continue to respect the process and support any future program that is implemented, I implore you to never again decide anything as vital and important as educational programs for kids without placing the topic on a duly noticed agenda, open for all to see, open for all to address, and open for all to scrutinize. I was taken wholly by surprise that this was decided at a study session, especially after only two options were presented to parents to choose from and home learning 3.0 being absent from the agenda. With that said, I realize that the study session is the past and that we must keep moving forward. We must all unify and stand behind whatever program is produced. So I implore all of you to incorporate what we've learned from home learning 2.0 and make vast improvements for the upcoming fall semester, including accountability, structure, and regular presence. Let's be intellectually honest here and admit that 2.0 was a disappointment in the least. As I learn to accept the inevitability of home learning 3.0, I implore you all to be flexible and creative in your approach throughout the fall semester. There are many creative and innovative ways to ensure that the kids feel connected to the school structure and their education. For example, maybe hold electives, some classes, et cetera, on the school fields while the weather permits. Perhaps we could utilize empty auditoriums for scattered in-person instruction or creative expression. The student population that will be most affected by home learning 3.0 is the TK through 5th graders, who will absolutely be challenged in their learning and retention because of their age and immaturity. Finally, please don't start planning for second semester one month before the second semester is set to begin. Please start now. Any effective and robust educational program is comprised of many moving parts and it is untenable to put all those parts together in one month during unprecedented health challenges. While safety and health is a valid and pressing concern, it must be balanced alongside the very valid and pressing image of...
Mr. Spitz, that's time.
Well, I'm almost there. And socially, learning for our kids. There are many interests to be balanced, but the aforementioned interests must be treated as co-equals. In closing, thank you for your service and leadership during these times. I look forward to reviewing the home learning 3.0 plan and hope that you will all be open to excluded scrutiny and feedback. And that's by Donna Trifman.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz.
You want to hear the second one? Yes? I have, greetings, President Hacker, fellow board members, Dr. Bragey, and all others. I have several questions for the board. Despite news from LAUSD, a recent posting from the superintendent of Las Vergenes School District, a very reputable school district, confirmed that their middle and high schools will be open daily for school learning. They have a program that is bifurcating between morning and afternoon classes with a 90-minute break between classes for disinfecting. They have purchased supplies and materials, including electrostatic disinfecting machines, and have created safe areas for administrators and teachers, allowing for the campuses to reopen daily. Their plan is for mods 1 and 2 to be on Monday, mods 3 and 4 to be on Tuesday, mods 5 and 6 to be on Wednesday, and for it to rotate through with 1 and 2 again on Thursday, et cetera. When off-campus, students will be doing work for their upcoming courses. There's nothing posted suggesting anything other than buy-in from parents, teachers, and their union. Was this model considered? Has our district taken steps to get disinfecting gear? So that, so that it could be. The alternating week-on, week-off model is fraught with issues and too much remote learning with the parents doing teachers' jobs. Sending our kids to school on a regular basis, like the Las Vergenes case, on a daily basis is a great option. Two, separately, it is my understanding that 60% of the teachers don't want to report to work, but 40% will. Why not let those that want to report to work, report to work and teach? And those parents and kids/kids who want to go to school apply via a lottery to have their kids attend school with those teachers that are willing to return to the classroom? Anyone, teachers, kids, administrators. Returning to school does so voluntarily. Signs a waiver releasing the district from liability relating to COVID and school resumes. You might have one teacher for each grade, but at least all will have signed off and waived their rights to claims injury or damage as a result of returning to school setting. At least you have a voluntary opt-in program. If Trump can get legally binding waivers to attend a rally of his, our district can do the same for those that want to work and attend school full-time. Three, if the school district is absolutely insistent on remote learning, either as the standard or as part of hybrid learning, I believe the district must provide parents with the opportunity of allowing their kids to identify other kids they want to be in class with and for the district to try and pair those kids together whenever possible. The reason is that when kids are learning remotely, they can, at their parents' election, get together outside of school and work together at home in small group settings. This allows parents to work outside of the school setting with parents they know, gives kids socialization opportunities, and even provides some childcare support. Four, I wonder if you have given thought to canceling school altogether and restarting in January 2021? It seems as if the party's...
Mr. Spitz, that's time. That's three minutes.
Pardon me? That's it? All right. This letter had quite a bit yet to go and it was from Gregory Bell. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
On fall options, Dear Board Members, with new cases of COVID-19 in California continuing to rise at an alarming rate, the seven-day average reaching an all-time high of 8,334 per day, according to the New York Times, which is many times the number back in March when the district first started home learning. I believe the decision for students to learn from home should be a no-brainer. In LA, the rate at which COVID-19 tests are turning up positive has clearly been on the rise as well. It is now almost twice the World Health Organization's threshold recommended for school opening. I heard this very easy-to-understand explanation of why schools should remain closed despite continued calls from some to reopen. Quote, "A 10-year-old student may have a 30-year-old teacher, a 50-year-old bus driver, or live with a 70-year-old grandmother. All need to be protected. There is a public health imperative to keep schools from becoming a Petri dish." End quote. Therefore, I urge the board to make a decision quickly to go to home learning 3.0. The start of fall semester is fast approaching. Continued uncertainty about the fall term does nobody any good. Teachers need to start planning with school administrators about how best to teach in the fall. Parents and caregivers also need to prepare for how to cope with the district's decision if it means kids are staying home. That's from Daniel Lowe. And this last one for me is also called Fall Option. Months ago, I was one of the teachers who chose the fifty-fifty blended hybrid model for the fall option in the survey. I will now, it will now make no sense for us to consider that option when cases of COVID-19 are surging even worse than at that time. Now is not the time to simply ask what option is better for you or me. The question should be, what can we all do to stop spreading the virus and save our lives? There is so much unknown to this virus. Zero death rate for children while sounding good, but what about the teachers? Is it really worth the risk for anyone to choose a hybrid model for merely twenty-seven point three school days spread out over a whole semester? Is it, it is disturbing to see our community not coming together in agreement. Childcare and emotional issues are real issues, but holding up a protest sign accusing that the teachers' union is the real virus or suggesting that teachers should work without a contract certainly will not solve these problems. Teachers and students were thrown into application of technology in order to teach and learn in March. Positive experience of distance learning can come out of, can come about with preparation and training. Now is the time for us to prepare to do better for each other. A hundred percent virtual learning is the right thing to do temporarily. If teachers, students, and parents' roles are defined with clear expectations, schedules, and guidelines, the experience of distance learning has to be better. I want to thank the board and district administration for working on this matter diligently, and I trust that the right decision will be made with safety for all being the top priority. That's from Judith Chan.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. So before I read a few more letters to the board, I want to start off by clarifying and responding to an inquiry that came in as a result of last Tuesday's study session. So again, just to clarify, the board did not take formal action during the July seventh, twenty twenty study session meeting regarding the selection of an instructional delivery model for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. The matter will be considered by the board at a regularly scheduled and/or special board meeting for further discussion and final action. The committee will have an opportunity to address the board during a public comment period before the matter is considered by the board. Thank you for raising your concern, and I hope that that clarifies it for anybody else who might have the same concern or inquiry. Okay, my next letter comes from Barbara Woltag. And it's on home learning. Dear B school board, I am writing, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That one already was written, was, I believe, read by Mr. Marco. So here it is. It's not the second one. Okay. Home learning three point O. Dear board members, thank you for your leadership in recommending a more robust two point O home learning program. This allows our children the vital connections they need to BHUSD teachers and peers while ensuring a safe environment for all students and teachers. While Apex may work for some, self-taught, self-paced learning is not good, is not a good fit for many, and some classes were simply not available. Our students thrive on structure and accountability. We look forward to a fall semester in which students are safe and fully engaged. Many thanks, Julie Green. The next one comes from Richard Green. I would like to urge the board to endorse a full return to core academic classes with live streaming only. Teachers would be required to physically be present on campus and teach classes for the full working day. Students would be required to attend live streaming classes according to their schedules. High-quality video conferencing hardware and software should be provided to the schools. Both students and teacher should be required to transmit video and audio feeds during class. Classes should be recorded for subsequent review by students. In-person school attendance would lead to the acceleration of a coronavirus epidemic. Students, teachers, parents, and other family would be unnecessarily infected. BHUSD should make the best of the situation by putting in place a high-quality distance learning platform that could be utilized even when, even after the epidemic has run its course. And again, that's from Dr. Richard Green. The next one comes to us from Mrs. Nikki Flores on home learning three point O. Comment. Hello, board members. I appreciate you taking the time to share this letter. My name is Nikki Flores. I am currently a fifth-grade horseman teacher, a place I have called my second home for the past eight years. I first of all, want to thank you for the hours and energy you have dedicated this summer to finding a safe way to move forward into the next school year. These are certainly unprecedented times and none, none of the options available to us, none, and none the options available to us forward are what any of us prefer. We all want to go back to a normal life. We all want to return to work. We want to return to classrooms as they existed before the spring break. The reality is that this is not possible to do so at this time. Based on right, on the rising COVID-19 cases in our area, I do not believe and do not feel safe returning to school in person in August. I feel very encouraged to know that you're looking into the possibility of moving into the fall with a home learning three point O. It is the only option I have seen presented by the board that is safe for all students and staff members. Thank you for acknowledging this and for listing the safety of students and staff members and our families as your top priority. Should you commence, should we commence the school year with distance learning? I think it is important to allow teachers the opportunity to teach from home if they choose to. You may be aware that last monthly teacher in Arizona who was teaching virtually from her classroom tragically passed away. Colleagues, she was in close contact with, also tested positive for the illness. Should we be required to be on campus in any capacity? I would greatly fear for the safety of our staff members. It is in everyone's best interest to move into the new school year with everyone online. And please allow us to continue to teach from home as it is the safest for all these trying times. Stay healthy and safe. Again, Mrs. Nikki Flores. And I have one more. No, I think that's it. The rest are pretty much the same. So again, thank you for submitting your letters to the board. These will all be entered into the record and will show up in our next, in our minutes for the next meeting. Okay, so we are now going to move to consent calendar. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar. May I have a second?
I'll second.
I will second.
Is anyone pulling? No one's pulling from consent. Okay, I did, I did want to pull. Item G. Item G and actually, item G and item I. So, okay.
Mrs. Hacker, who made the second?
I believe it was Noah Margot. I saw Mrs. Marcus too, but I.
I heard everybody. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so can we have a Mrs., so Noah, I'm asking for your second minus those two objects, or those two items, I'm sorry.
Yes, I will agree to that. That's fine.
Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, let's do a roll call. Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus? Okay, Ms. Marcus, can you say yes? Okay. And Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Okay, so my question was, I pulled item G. So is someone from facilities here?
Would you like me to make a motion to put that?
Yes, I'm sorry, a motion. Yes, let's make a motion.
Okay.
Let's make a motion.
To approve disposal of surplus.
I approve the disposal of surplus portable classrooms.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Margot made the first motion and Mrs. Marcus got the second. Thank you. And my question is just very simple, so I just want to ask if the sale of these portables happens, will it be communicated back to the board? Will the board receive an update? Wade, I defer to you, I guess.
President Hacker, yes, if we're able to sell the portable buildings and, and get any surplus, then we'll report this back to the board.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Okay. Okay, Mrs. Walker Schuman.
Yes, it's just for the sake of the public to understand, because I had asked this question and, and I think it's important for everybody to hear. These, these are not trailers or bungalows that can be used as classrooms, correct? Can you confirm the status of these are not repurposable?
Correct. They have been modified to such an extent that they cannot be used for classrooms.
Okay, so just to make sure the public understands that we're not getting rid of perfectly good classrooms. We're actually surplusing ones that cannot be utilized in that way.
I see you, Mrs. Thank you. Mrs. Marcus.
My question was, if they are used right now for maintenance operation and for the facilities, where are those people going to be going? Where is the space for them to go in place of if we get rid of these facilities, these two portables? Or where will they go? Is there someplace they're going? Where have they been or up to now?
Trustee Marcus, they'll move to another area of the high school campus that's been identified just to the west of where they are now. So they're going to stay on the high school campus and just be moved to another location temporarily. It's just, this is all related to the construction that's going on on the campus. So the land and anticipated, so we do have a place for them, so they will not be opposed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Margot, I saw your hand.
Mrs. Marcus asked my question. Thank you.
Okay, great. Anybody else? Mr. Spitz, Mr. Kishanian? Okay, all those in favor, I'll call it the question, please. Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Okay, so the vote passes five zero. Thank you for that. The next item on the agenda that I pulled.
For the approval of the agreement to renew, to renew Asset Panda IT Asset Management System for a twenty twenty twenty-one fiscal year.
I will second that. Thank you, Mr. Margot, and I second it. My question was, and I believe Mr. Damico already provided the answer ahead of time, but I just want to clarify this for the public who might be watching. Mr. Damico with us?
I am.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you, there you are. My question again is the same one I asked you earlier. We saw three quotes, and so there didn't appear to be an amount on the narrative. So if you could just clarify what you're asking the board to approve?
We're just asking the board to approve the twelve-month agreement of nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ten cents for the annual subscription renewal for Asset Panda.
Great, thank you for clarifying that. I'd like to ask Pam to please record that into the minutes. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Damico. Mrs. Marcus, I see you. Mr. Marco?
Okay, this is the second time that I've asked when the rationales are coming out with things. I discussed this with Dr. Bregy already, but I would like to see the amounts listed in the rationales that we, that is out that I take from what you can get from the board for public view. So this, there were two of them or three of them this time that did not have that. And that Isabel Hacker just pointed that out. I also noticed that, is this a contract that we have laid unless it's for Mr. Damico? Would we renew this every year for every year? Is this something that we would probably keep year to year to year?
Well, we would, we would keep a, an asset management system. I didn't want to renew this in a multi-year agreement because we're making some changes in IT and I didn't want to commit the district to a three-month agreement for asset management until we had more certainty about how we want to move forward with asset management over the long term.
Okay, that was the reason that I asked the question because I did see that there was a saving for a three-year contract. So that was why I asked that question, and I'm satisfied with the answer. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Damico again, and Mrs. Marcus for that, for those questions. Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any ayes? Okay, no? Attention? Great, thank you. The vote passes five zero. The item passes with five votes, I should say. Okay, we're moving on to superintendent's report. And before I turn it over to Dr. Bregy, I just want to say we did, we received a request after the agenda was put together to include some additional items having to do with, you know, the return fall options for next year. And so since Dr. Bregy is going to be covering that under his superintendent's report, I probably would not have placed it anyways, but I just wanted the members of the public to understand that we do put our agenda together maybe on Thursdays before Friday or really right in the morning on Friday. So once the agenda is put together, it's really, it's almost impossible to go back and make adjustments. So I apologize if we didn't get it, but Dr. Bregy is going to cover it, that in the superintendent's report, that request. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. I received those emails and recognize the importance of this pressing issue for many parents about what the options are for us, for our community in the fall. So with, without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Bregy. Thank you.
Thank you. So like I typically do each meeting is present to you some of the work that we're doing, the daily work and some of the, the work that we're going to be looking at in the future. Often, this has just been one of the priorities that we have is working on what our school year is going to look like for next year. So thank you for that opportunity. As you know, and it's just certainly all over the news that, you know, we're in a situation now that is much different than we were in March. You know, we have cases of COVID-19 in Beverly Hills and just LA County, for example, has gone up just over four thousand new cases today alone. So it's certainly something that we're keeping our eye on as we continue to explore looking at our options for next year. As I sent out in some communication this, just earlier this week, it's important that, that people know that, that we're all struggling with coming up with the right thing to do at the right time, and we are spending an incredible amount of time getting input from as many people as we can so that, you know, we do make the right decision for our students and for our staff and for our community. We have talked about before health and safety. And so it is clearly, you know, when we started to look at, you know, what is the most important thing? You know, you can't have the other things like education rigor and consistency and just the, the well-being of our children and our staff without having health and safety. So we've made health and safety a priority. And as you know, with the public health order that was just released, you know, that is their priority too. So with our priority being health and safety and also the public health order, that is helping us as we are exploring different options for what school, the school year will look like for next year. Everything that we look at, every idea we get, everything that's, that's out there and being communicated in questions, we look at everything. And, and when we start to look at what, what can be, everything that we look at is just, has planning and implementation challenges with it. You know, it's very polarizing, which is why this has become such an emotional issue. So it doesn't surprise very many people at all that we haven't come out with the decision because it's so emotional, we want to make sure that we get this right. We do need to make sure that our plan, we have to ensure that we have a safer environment now, especially with so many cases that are happening throughout LA County. We have to make sure that we're providing a safe environment, a safer environment than in March when we had the first wave of COVID-19. There's many issues that we are continuously looking at as, as, as the weeks go on and, and our cooperation and our communication with the state officials, local and state, and also. and also our federal officials as well. And the questions are very similar to what the priorities are. You know, we have a responsibility to provide the safest environment possible for our students and staff. We want to ensure that we are offering a very effective and consistent way to deliver instruction to students. I think we are all very well aware of the fact that we are in a different place today than we were in March. And I just want people to, to step back for a second to, to remember what March was like in April, where we weren't even sure if we were going to close for the entire school year at that point. So there was a lot of back and forth at that time. And so we're in a different place today. We know more about the virus. We know more about what worked and what didn't work in the past. And that's helping us as we explore our options going into the future. It must be highlighted over and over that we're not preparing for a permanent situation here. And so no matter what option, whichever way we go, we have to immediately start looking at how we're going to transition back full-time, all students, all staff, back in the classroom. Even just looking at a hybrid option where you've got your cohorts A, B, and C. If that were the model that was selected, we would still immediately, after that starts, immediately start looking at our preparedness for moving all students back. We know that's going to happen. We want that to happen. And we want to be sure that we're ready, that whatever option we select, that our immediate next step is to look at a phased-in approach so that we can move forward for bringing all students back. Many times it's being brought to our attention about the special needs of our primary and our elementary students. We want to meet and exceed what we provide our students. We are having a great amount of conversation with our teachers. And I actually met with three parents today that were just lovely and just really provided a lot of really good information to, as we begin to continue to explore the options, really good ideas that hadn't been brought up. So those current and relevant ideas are really important to us. And we want to ensure that we meet the needs of all of our students, but especially our special education students and our elementary students that are in a different place when it comes to being able to advocate for their own learning. But going forward, the pathway has to be that it has to be realistic. There are overwhelming challenges. And I know that some people have brought up in the past, they, I just heard tonight in public comment, you know, that some, some pretty strong allegations about, you know, knowing an option before you came into a meeting. And I can assure you that we don't have the opportunity to meet as a group like this very often. And I think that some people are mischaracterizing some of the communication and the process of development. We know that for some time, the LA County has been talking to superintendents for over the last four or five weeks about a possible shutdown because the, the virus, it was spiking and there was more and more cases. And so we've been told over and over, be ready to have a full-distance learning plan in place. So when people start to, you know, make allegations that there was a plan somewhere in a drawer and we just kind of pulled it out at the study session, you know, I'm going to assure people that is not at all how that happened. We've been looking at a possible physical shutdown again for a very long time because the county has informed superintendents, be ready, be ready because that may take place. So one thing that happened yesterday that is of significance is the County of LA Department Public Health Order. And so this is a 13-page document that we've been talking about for a long time. Superintendents reviewed this information over a month ago, but several revisions have taken place. And it, this is a document, there's the, the link that's on your screen right now. Feel free to, to go to that. And, you know, this is not like some of the other things that we've seen. This is not looked at as guidelines. These are looked at as that we are required to do these things. In fact, on the very first page of the order, it says that schools must implement all applicable measures listed below and be prepared to explain why any measure that's not implemented is not applicable to the setting. So in other words, there is, it looks like a checklist of things that you have to check. But if there's something that you can't check, you have to explain to the county why you can't fulfill one of the expectations. And these are just some of the areas that they cover, everything from workplace policies and practices, physical distancing, which we've been hearing about for, you know, many months since March and April. We're looking at infection control and also communication and equity among the delivery of instruction that we provide. Some additional, just items I want to bring to your attention because I think you can read the entire document on your own, but, but there's some things that I want to just kind of point out to you that are really big shifts for us. And there's a heavy lift here. We, we have a responsibility to prevent and contain the spread of COVID-19. And it's not just school districts. If you look to see what's happening with Governor Newsom, you know, going back and starting to close up some of our indoor places and places where you get your haircut. We're starting to reverse because it, that responsibility to prevent and contain, that wasn't working as things were opening up. So there's some things that we're doing now and the city is doing and the entire state of California is doing to ensure that we are part of solving and mitigating the spread of the virus. Immediate plans if someone in our community tests positive. And so we are having to put together policies and protocols for when, when people in our own community are going to be testing positive. And the one thing I want people to, to know right off that, that no matter what option we choose, these are things that have to be in place because we're going to at some point, whether it's hybrid or whether it's all-distance learning or whether everyone's back, we're going to have to start implementing these policies and practices to ensure that everybody is safe. We are starting to, this week, with our think tank, we're actually in schools. And we're actually looking at what classrooms look like with 10 to 12 desks in them. We're working with our doctors and with our psychologists and, and a few of our staff members. And we're really have boots on the ground and we are in our facilities looking to see what it's like for our students to walk from a drop-off area into the, the main school area and in, to our classrooms and looking at bathrooms and looking at places where all of our students and our staff would go. So we're developing a lot of those procedures right now. The order is very specific in that, that when somebody is symptomatic or there's been some sort of exposure to COVID-19, that there is an isolation room so that that person is removed immediately. And then that person will be, you know, there's some testing that happened. There's some questions about exposure. There's going to be some questions about, you know, where has this specific person been and who they've been around so that we can then begin to find the relationships and find the history of where somebody went so that then we can then communicate that information. Because if somebody is around somebody that is exposed to COVID-19, that we have a responsibility now to ensure that we communicate that information. So we're looking at that type of information about how, what a quarantine looks like and whether it's students or staff. And it's pretty disruptive. And so that it's an immediate, you have to go home and then you're quarantined for 14 days. If there are more than three COVID-positive reportings in a certain site, then you have to work with the entire county to look to see, this is considered to be a cluster. And then you have to look to see what the next possible plan will be for the entire school. Will it be a shutdown of a particular hallway or grade level or the entire school? That's something we would work with the state about. The contingency plans for full and partial schools, foreclosures, this has been in place since March. So this really hasn't changed. We're, we're told over and over to be prepared for anything that could happen with the state of California and specifically LA County. We know that there's some consistency in the order when it comes to wearing masks and being around others in masks. And all of our students will be required to be in masks when they are at school, along with our staff as well. The six-foot distancing that is expected. And that has a great deal of impact when it comes to, not only in the classroom setting, but we've had a lot of conversations with teachers about what does that look like in your classroom setting? Because students can't move together in groups. They have to be six feet apart. And so we're actually looking to see how does that work from a teacher perspective to ensure that kids remain safe and that they keep their six-foot distancing from one another. We have cleaning, sanitizing, and disinfecting schedules that are being put together. There are specific products that have been made and developed just specifically for killing COVID-19 germs and on, on flat surfaces. And so we are looking at these products. We are coming up with a cleaning schedule. And as I mentioned before, every parent and staff member deserves to know what that cleaning schedule is, how often it's being done, the products that we're using, and we will share all of that information with you. We are having conversations about how to, even, even in a small environment like the cohort model, we've got 10 or 12 in a class, that presents a lot of challenges for us when students are moving throughout the school and the building. So you were looking at what, what, just like you were at a grocery store. We're looking at those markers and tapings and looking at what hallways would be designated as a one-way hallway versus another hallway being another one ways to ensure that students can get to where they need to without crossing one another. The other issue is if we're looking at temperature taking and, and having those conversations with students when they come in about whether they have any symptoms, that we're looking at multiple entrances and exits. And this, this is a complete 180 from where we were before when we were looking at our security, when we were trying to work ourselves down to one or two entry points in a school. This, this will change all of that. And we will have to look at a different way to be able to use every exit and entrance we can to have teachers and students come through to start the day. We've had great conversations with our teachers. I just want to say I, I've yet to meet any staff member at all that has said that they want to work at home because they enjoy staying at home. I've yet to have that conversation with anybody. It, it impacts our teaching where we are. And so our teachers are concerned about providing the best delivery for kids. And we're having some really good conversations as we work through our MOU and our bargaining sessions. And so hats off to our teachers. Our, our third session is tomorrow. So many people are asking if those conversations are taking place. And I'm here to tell you, not only are they taking place, but they're very, very positive as well. And so usually superintendent is not part of the bargaining negotiation sessions, but I chose to be part of this one. And, you know, I'm just, I'm proud to be part of it because it's, everybody is, is really has the best interest of our students. And everybody wants to ensure that we do the best possible job. And the conversations that we have over and over with, with what we've learned from March and April and May to where we are now is just, it's just mind-boggling. And it's really rewarding to actually hear those conversations. So whether we're using lockers or locker rooms, supplies, you know, those things were not, those things are not to be shared. So they're, we're having to come up with procedures so that, that students aren't sharing and passing, you know, supplies to one another. Having lunch in classrooms is a completely different dynamic. And because teachers are in and they're out and, and students will have to stay within their six-foot area. That, that just doesn't happen overnight. That's not just, you just don't tell a student that they have to stay here. We have to come up with a lot of details and planning about how that works and when kids actually move to different areas, especially if it's inside or outside. There, according to the order, that there are no spectator events. So they're really trying to limit the visitors to be on our campus. And so there's not going to be events where, whether it's inside or outside, we're having a lot of traffic, you know, come to our schools and be part of an event. This, this order is so specific that you can see on this slide that there's, it's, it's interesting that this is how specific this order is, that if you are in choir, that those activities are suspended. However, if you are in an instrumental group, they are allowing that to happen six feet apart. You know, each musician would just be following social distancing. So you can see that the social, this, this, this public order is, is really specific in nature to ensure the safety of our students and staff. School-wide, school-wide events, you know, coming into auditoriums and having, you know, all-school assemblies, school plays, field trips, all of that will be halted for the time being. Students and staff visitors in, in, I know I just said that visitors are, we're limiting the number of visitors, but that when, when our parents come to our schools, there's some, there's some times where a visitor will need to come in and need to pick up a child. So we're putting together some protocols, what that looks like, how, how that screening is done, whether it's temperature checks, whether we're, you know, assessing symptoms through, and there's a variety of ways to do this and, and when that would be and where that would be and how many students you can accommodate at one time. We're also looking at the screening for the positive results. You know, what happens to an adult is, is that they return home immediately and they self-isolate. And we have to find out who that adult has been around so that we can contact those people as well. Same thing with the student. And this is, this is rough because this is going to be really tough on a student if that happens. We have had students with COVID-19 in our school district. So I understand the research. I spend a lot of time doing this every day. But we've had students that have COVID-19 and we will have students that have it again. We have to put together a compliance team. So it, as I've said before at other meetings, we become like public health officers because there's not enough of them. So the administration, realistically, we become the public health officers. And so we need to put together a team so that we can then start to process and, and collect data on those people that are positive and, and how we're handling them and who they've been in contact with. And all of this is documentation. So this is on top of all the things that we do. And like I said, it's important for me just to, to mention that this is not, it, it doesn't matter what option that we're, that we're going to be going into. These things have to be in place, no matter what. The adult visitors, just being in contact with somebody that's been screened positive. You know, if somebody comes in, we, everyone, it's, it's, we're going to spend a lot of time on communication when and if that happens where somebody is in contact with somebody. Same thing with students, if they're in close contact with somebody. And a lot of times it's not just what happens in school, it happens outside of school. Because just before we physically closed our schools, we had a lot of reports coming in from people in the community. And you can just imagine what our phones were like, you know, somebody reporting that a neighbor had somebody that came in from China that was staying at their house and that they were, you know, that at that time, it was, that was the highest rate of infection was, was China. And so that's, and, and they soon after then closed flights. So people were reporting that was happening. And then people were reporting their neighbors and their friends and their, and we started to follow up on all those things. And we, you know, we did do those things because it was required to do that. Even now, it's even more intrusive now than it was before. So there's a lot of information that we would need to collect and then report back out to the county. Kind of finishing up here. Hang on one second. For infection control, these are the measures that we're putting in place. I know that there's been a lot of comments, a lot of emails and questions about optimal ventilation, what type of filters that we're using for our air conditioning, what about classrooms that have doors in that, or windows, that, that there are no windows to the outside? How is that going to be handled? How is ventilation going to be? We're physically in every square inch of our schools answering these questions right now. So when we don't get back to emails and we don't get, we're, we're trying to do the best that we can to get to people. But you can see by this, by this order here, that these are the things that we're having to find out and, and, and look at. Because again, wherever we are in this process, you know, we're going to be in our schools again. And so we have to look to see what is the best environment and what classroom has the best ventilation. Talked about air filters, the cleaning and disinfecting schedule that's happening every day. We're looking at those products. The order is so specific that it actually talks about that the cleaning that's done is, is not- is is not to be done while students are actually in school. And so there's some discussion about whether that's the deep cleaning or is that cleaning that happens, you know, if a class leaves a middle school, how is that going to be cleaned? And so those are some of the questions that we have, but the order is very specific that they don't want that to happen. Some of the products are are really harsh products. These are products that have been approved to kill COVID-19. And so we're using those on the the tops of desks. And so we, we need to see, some of the products say that they need to be left on there for a period of time for them to work. Well, that's not going to work if there's another, you know, 10 or 12 kids that are coming into a classroom. So those are the types of things that we're looking at, and the order has brought to us. It's, it's really rigid, as you can see, but it's also raised some questions too, because we want to ensure that we're following it. And there's things like with cleaning that we need to make sure that that gets done and that we meet those needs and exceed them when it comes to cleaning, sanitizing, disinfecting. Water fountains, as you can probably already imagine, that that would be a no-go item for us, that we don't want kids coming up to water fountains, so we would shut those down, we would tape those up. You know, there's going to be basically tape all over the place. I mean, it's going to be on the floor, it's going to be over drinking fountains. I mean, it's going to be really, it, it's going to be a shock for our kids to to walk into a school that they're used to seeing every day and and not be able to go to certain places and go up close to people or go near a drinking fountain or go down a different hallway. I mean, this is, this is a new, a new normal for us as, as we begin to look at how we bring our students back. Playground equipment, you know, there's, there's some high-touch areas there where we, we, it wouldn't be possible to have a staff member next to every single piece of playground equipment. Or if it's a high-touch area where a student's going to touch something and then another student's going to go and touch something or a staff member. So there's a lot to do with masks in the order, which I'll let you read. And just, there, there are some options with our younger students and their teachers when it comes to a shield, and that would be up to the, the discretion of the staff member. So as I said, it, it doesn't matter, like the option, and we are exploring a lot of things, as I mentioned, just today, I was given some great ideas, I had just a wonderful conversation with three parents, and we are exploring everything right now. I want to assure you of a couple of things as I close. As, as, as emotions are high and the anxiety is high and and people are trying to figure out what they're going to do with their families, I want to assure you, in no way is this political. If it was, we'd have a decision already, we'd be done. It is not financial, and it is not a union issue. And as I mentioned, the conversations that we're having, our teachers want to get back to work. Our teachers want to do a good job. It, it was very strange ending the year the way that we did, but the difference is that our, our teachers knew the students in March. So, so going to the Home Learning Plan 2.0 was much different than what's happening now. Our teachers are struggling with the fact of how do I start class when I haven't even met the student? So I don't want people, there's no union issue here. This, everybody wants us to get back in the classroom, and no matter what happens, we're going to start planning for that because that will happen. We just hope that it's sooner than later. This public health order, and this is again, probably not a real popular thing to say, but I'm just going to say it. They, this is so, so specific and so rigid that it, it makes it almost impossible to follow everything here. And I, and I welcome you to see it yourself. This is why a lot of school districts, just in the last 24 hours, you know, are saying we can't, we can't do this. We're, we're saying we want to review it, we want to look at it, we want to see what we can do. And and that's what we're doing, and that's why we're spending time in classrooms, so that we can look to see how can we meet the needs of the order and keep our kids and our staff safe. Again, it's the number one priority that we have. I'll leave you with this, that, that whatever the option is, I would hope that what you would expect as parents and community members is that you want some sort of phase-in process. And whether we start at a hybrid or all distance learning, we have to be able to provide you with a phase back in so that everybody is back in, in our schools. And so you've seen the phase-in process, you've seen it work in county government, you've seen it happen in state government, and it doesn't always go as planned, as you can see, when they have to revert back and take a step back. But I think that that's the, that's an expectation that I hope you have and one we will be able to deliver, is to provide you with our thoughts and our plan for moving forward to bring every student and every staff back into a traditional setting so that our schools are physically open. So that's what I have for right now. I know that there might be some questions from some board members, so I'm, I'm happy to turn this back over to Mrs. Hacker.
Thank you, Dr. Braggy, for that comprehensive report. And so at this point, I'd like to go around and ask board members to please have your questions, be considerate of other board members, and public comment, I just want to remind everyone, has ended. So it's, we need to be fair to everyone who might be sending texts or emails to board members right now. I, I understand that. So to try to focus on macro issues, because Dr. Dr. Braggy already did a very nice job of laying out a lot of details for us. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Margot.
Thank you, Dr. Braggy. I, I, I think there's still a lot of unknowns in, in how we're going to figure out putting students back on campus. You know, last week, I, I guess I kicked off a tsunami before I left the meeting, and I'm glad that I did because the conversation had to happen. And I'm, I'm also delighted that the people are talking about it. See, whatever happens, if they agree or disagree, they're talking about their schools now, they're talking about education. So, oh, you know, sorry, I was, do you want, Mrs. Hacker, do you want me to defer to Mr. Kishanian right now?
No, you have the floor, it was my mistake, and Mr. Kishanian will go next. Thank you.
I, I should have known that myself. I, I, I'm curious to see how our classrooms lay out. I'm curious to see if there's even ways to pull off what public health. I, I disagree with public health, I think with the rise. And I looked at the date on that report, and the date was actually last week, and I think they were still hedging their bets that the situation would not deteriorate as fast as it has. I bet if they were to put another report out, it would probably say, you know what, we're better off closing schools right now. Because I think it's everybody's responsibility in the community, the city, the county, the state, the world, to stop this thing. So if we decide that we're going to try to do a workaround and potentially risk spreading the disease more, we're, we're aggravating the problem. We're, we're exponentially making this thing worse. So I think it's a wise thing to have options that allow people to stay separated right now and deliver the best instruction we can deliver. What a lot of people aren't thinking, and I, and I completely empathize with all of those parents that have written us with how difficult this has been. We absolutely agree with them. It has been difficult. I do not want to take that away from anybody. But at the same time, we should be the reason this thing goes away, not that it perpetuates. So I think it, it behooves a, a district of, of intelligent people, of leaders, of, of people who set the trends, to do what's right. And the right thing is to stop this disease as soon as possible. That would get everybody back into the classroom under more normal stan, circumstances. Because like you described, if we have to go back the way that public health is designing it, I bet you most people are going to spend a day there and say, forget this, I don't want to go to school like this, this isn't school, it's not worth it. I'd rather be home, looking at my teacher, talking to my teacher every day. So there's a computer screen in front of us. It doesn't take away from the fact that we're interacting, I'm learning, they have access to their materials. It could be a much better environment for everybody. And and it's what Beverly Hills does. I mean, we, we should be setting the trend in this, we should be, people should look to us and say, look how they're doing it, as opposed to we having to look at others for that same thing. That's, that's what I think. So thank you for the work so far. I know we're a little bit ways off, I know we have issues, logistical issues, instructional issues, the teachers' union, we have to talk about all that stuff. I know those are still in play. So final decisions are not going to be made anytime too soon, but hopefully sooner than later, because we do need to get back to work. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Margot, and again, I apologize to Mr. Kishanian. You're next, though.
Thank you. I'd like to first start off by saying that I agree with everything that Mr. Margot had to say. And then I, I'd like to continue with saying that I hope everybody had a good weekend. I know that we're going through stressful times, and as a community, I know we can get through this together. Although much discussions has been made, has been being made about fall options, I hope everybody at home knows that I and all my fellow board members are all contemplating and discussing in order to find the most ideal approach to what school is going to look like in fall. It is extremely hard, it is, it is extremely hard in controversial times like these because everyone has different needs. What's good for one may not be the best for another. For instance, some students have both parents who work. Any type of home learning, including the ILC, creates an issue for those families. This is just one of the myriad of issues that pops up during times like these. Considering the circumstances that we are dealing with today, everyone should know that this is normal and that we are all trying to make the process as smooth and as beneficial for anyone, for everyone we can. Unfortunately, there's always a group of people who are unsatisfied, but we're trying to do everything we can to accommodate everyone. Now with the new public health order, we can finally have, we finally have an official guide as to all the requirements and preconditions that need to be met for all schools in the LA County. With this, we can now make thorough and detailed plans on all the nitty-gritty that must go into the planning of any option we decide to pursue. Please take it from me that all we, that all we, we want, that we all want the best for our community, and every detail is discussed at one, at one point. With each point, we look at what, what will benefit our, with each point, we look at what will benefit most people, and then we accommodate others to the best of our ability. So don't stress, because I know we have this under control. Thank you, and I hope everyone has a great rest of their week.
Thank you, Mr. Kishanian. Mr. Spitz?
Yes. I'd like to cut to the chase. It's just as clear as it can be that we cannot have our kids going back to school in any kind of a normal way. We can, we can look at the classrooms, we can try to figure out all these limitations, but it's just as clear as it can be that that's not going to happen. Safety is our first priority, but our second priority is the educational outcomes for our students. And this latest option that we discussed at our last study session, and that is to have our normal classroom teaching with the kids at home, with the students at home, the teachers in the class, is the, is, from everything that I can see, the way to go because the educational outcome will be very close to what it would be normally. And that means that the students will be getting educated and that they will be able easily to matriculate to the following semester or the following year in, in, hopefully in a more normal form. And so, and you can see where, for example, if, hopefully, we're able to reopen the schools in a normal way, let's say for the second semester, there's nothing to it. Because we've had a semester that is the norm, is the normal teaching routine in every course. So I, I just strongly favor that. And I also favor, insofar as is possible, to make arrangements for students to come to go, to, to enter the schools in the afternoons for group courses, group activity courses that are permissible. And that, that, that's just kind of a little opening step there. And of course, to arrange that, we, we have to understand that the students are coming from home, from home. Some of them a block away from school, some of them a couple of miles from school. So they would have to have the, the classes would have to be arranged so that they would have the time to leave their computers and get to, get to class for those, for those courses that they're able, those, that they're able to, to attend. I think, I think this is the best way to go, and, and, and I'm sure that that's where we'll wind up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz, Mrs. Mark Schuman.
My goodness, I feel like, I feel like I've gone back in time to like 2018, all over again. We, we've got a lot of conflict and people are super divided, and these are not easy decisions to make. These are not decisions that we take lightly, these are not decisions that we make behind closed doors and then just talk about them as if we've just come up with them, as has been alluded to in, in other letters that were written. I understand that parents are upset. Everybody wants their kids to go back to school. I want my kids to go back to school, that's where students need to be, it's where our, it's our entire economy is built around it. So I understand the conflict, I understand how upset people are. But at the end of the day, our role is to do what's right for all of our stakeholders, and that does not mean just students, and that doesn't mean just parents, and that doesn't mean just teachers or just faculty, it's for everyone. This board was elected by this entire community, not just the parents in this district, and it is our responsibility to all of the stakeholders that we answer to, to do the right thing in a time like this. So I understand that people are upset, and I'm really sorry about that. We have a responsibility to do what's right, and we need to be guided by the experts and by science and by making sure that the people that we're responsible for are safe. We have a responsibility to instructional integrity. This is really important, and I think a lot of people lose this in all of the conversations about going back, not going back, or why other districts are planning to and we're not, or whatever, however they want to put it together. But at the end of the day, staying in a digital environment, having a regular daily schedule, Monday through Friday, with the teachers in the classroom and the students at home, gives us the best outcome for instructional integrity, and that is what we're here to do. It keeps our teachers safe, it keeps our faculty state, safe, it keeps our children safe, and it delivers the education. So I, again, I get that there are different viewpoints, and everyone has the right to their own opinion. My role in all of this is to simply help educate people and answer the questions that people ask. And I understand that that can be upsetting when it's not in accordance with the viewpoint that's being shared. So I get that. But it is our job to do the right thing right now, and I know that that's hard. My son is calling me because he doesn't get the time change in Philadelphia or in Pittsburgh. I get that that's hard, and I get the students are not going to have the same experience that they wanted to have for their first semester. I have two seniors. I guarantee you, this is not how they envisioned their first semester senior year to look, and they're both athletes. We're all losing out on a lot of things, but you know what we're not going to be losing out on is we're not going to be losing our family members to this thing. We're not going to be losing our staff members to this thing. It's really just that simple. I, I said this earlier before in the week, I've said it on social media, it is absolutely my belief, I'm not willing to take the risk of even one life of a student or even one life of a faculty member, staff member, in order to force going back to school. And we've done mock classrooms, we've done these walkthroughs to set it up and to show and to demonstrate what this would be like for kids. It, the entire effort and energy is focused on how to move through the space, it's not focused on instruction, and that really cannot be lost in this conversation. Hopefully, we can get back to life as normal down the road, November, maybe December, maybe it's not until January or February, but at the end of the day, we still need to make sure that we're delivering education for our kids. It's not right, and, and to say that we're going to take a semester off and just start over, that's not even possible. It's not possible. There have been questions about the calendar, why can't we just change the calendar? Well, we can't just change the calendar, all of those things are negotiated, there are so many moving parts here. And I appreciate that at times like this, when the, when there's crisis in the community, people get more involved, they pay more attention. But there is a certain way that this type of work happens. It's government work, there's bureaucracy, there are things that we It's government work. There's bureaucracy. There are things that we simply cannot do that retail businesses and other establishments can do. And it doesn't mean that these aren't good ideas. We just don't have them as options because we are a public school district. And I think that needs to be said and it needs to be reminded for all of our constituents. We're not trying to pull one over on you guys. We're not trying to get away with something. To whose advantage? To what benefit? We're trying to make the right decision, to make sure our kids' education is preserved and the entire health and safety of our community and staff is protected. And at the end of the day, that's really what it's all about. So again, I apologize if you don't share the viewpoint. I respect that you have a different viewpoint. My viewpoint is we need to move forward with a robust three point O environment, or I actually don't even think we should call it three point O because in my view, it's not even gonna resemble what we did in home learning two point O. This has gotta be dynamically different. This has to make, this has to deliver for our kids. We need our teachers to show up in a way that not all of them did in the last semester of school. We need our administrators to be strong and give the support that our teachers need when they need it and to back them up and to hold them to account. We all need to play up right now. We all need to take a better role, a stronger role in making sure that we really deliver on this. This is not a time for anyone to just throw caution to the wind. And any assertion that this is taking the easy path, my God, that just means you don't understand what it is we're trying to do. This is not easy, not in any possible direction. So I support three point O. I think it's the right way to go or B H U S D at home, whatever we're gonna call this new model. Um, and again, everyone has the right to feel the way that they wanna feel, but we have to do the right thing. And I will say this, before I jumped on this board meeting, I got a text from a parent in this district who's married to a teacher in Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. Guess what? Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District is going online only for the start of their school year, the same way that we are. So all of these parents that have been making comparisons, well, they can do it, so we should too, or Los Virginas can do it, so we should too, we don't actually know. They haven't got a final memorandum of understanding with their teachers' union either. So anybody saying that, that the final plans have already been decided for these districts, that's not accurate. What we're finding out now is that more final plans are coming and that looks like exactly what we're talking about. So you know my position. I think we need to talk about it more. I don't imagine that, that this is something that we should be taking a vote on until we know we can deliver it in an absolutely perfect environment. I really believe that and, and that's what I'm gonna advocate for. So that's my, that's my position.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
It's my turn?
It is. Sorry, sorry, Jill.
I didn't think I was gonna get turned today. Um, anyway, I'd like to just tell you, Dr. Brady, that I appreciated your very comprehensive, uh, uh, explanation of the report that came from L A County today or yesterday, the Department of Health. I think they did an excellent job of explaining what we're faced against. And for the parents that are out there, uh, we are a little city in L A County and they need to remember that, that we are under their for their regulations. Um, I'd like to talk about as a teacher, and I don't, I don't wanna go into a long dissertation. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank, last week when this came up at the study session, this idea of maybe the teachers go to the classroom, I really thought that was an idea like thinking outside of the box. And it was something that really, I took a little bit of a, a thought about it and I, yeah, you know, that, that sounds like a great idea. All the kids, and the reason for that is this. One, there won't be four days in school and ten days off. There will be consistent instruction, the same to every kid. The teacher may do it a little differently one week and then the next week she might have a little bit different date. They will all get that consistent education from that teacher. So that was something that went through my mind. There are many times as a teacher, I would face a class first period and I may face that class second period and I would be totally different based on the class. And it will give that class some consistency. I don't know if you've ever faced that, but I have felt that as a teacher and it's always been. Um, I, I would like for the, us to think about the fact that we're going to make this the most robust, if we go with this plan, that this will be something that we will be able to really give the kids a robust education in a safe way. So I'm really thinking that that will be something that we can really do it. Uh, I think that it'll give us a chance to evaluate the teachers, it will give us a chance to, uh, work together and it will be safe for the teachers if they do go back to school. And also I'd like to mention that if they do, if this happens, there will be an organized, well-organized schedule for the students that they will follow every day. So that first period may be one subject, then the next period another subject. They're going to get more minutes of instruction than they did on the previous plan. I don't like the fact that maybe by calling it three point O, everybody is thinking of it as a version of two point O. I think we need to think of it as something different, as, as Tristan said, that was a good point. So um, I really feel that this is a, 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 a unique idea. It's something that we should explore and, um, I think that, I know that there'll be parents out there that are gonna be furious. I know what they want. But we can't please everybody and I take you back to the reconfiguration and how people had their opinions, one side or the other. Well, it turned out to be one of the best things our district ever did. And I wanna point out that we can make this learning situation for our kids under this possible plan, the best that they will get. So I've said my two cents.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Um, so Dr. Brady, first of all, thank you for that report and, um, I just do wanna ask, uh, I did receive several emails, as I'm sure you all did. Um, the little guys, the K five, um, students. You know, a big concern about this option that we are, um, that has surfaced um, and that the board has given direction to investigate. It seems that many parents, and I understand, you know, as, as a parent of, I think I'm the only one on the school board who has a child who is in that time, in that age group. And it's not even fourth and fifth graders, I just wanna say, who I'm most concerned of. I'm, I'm concerned about the TK, kindergartners, the first, second, and third graders. But especially the little, little guys coming into our school for the first time in their life or maybe just with one year barely behind their tenure here at B H U S D. What and how, you know, are we going to do as a school district to provide support for these young learners? Because I would imagine it is incredibly difficult for them. They don't have the skills, the skill set to really sit behind a screen and absorb and to be really, uh, aware of, of their focus and how they're supposed to react to this screen in real time. And so I, I don't mean to be hap, be, I hope this is not an unfair question, but it is a real concern on the minds of many, many people. Um, so I'm not an educator, but I'm wondering, um, and if anybody on the cabinet is there listening, you know, if you wanna jump in, I'd appreciate it. I'm sure people watching would appreciate your answers.
So let me go ahead and just start and then cabinet, uh, obviously just please feel free to, to jump in if you would like to. So I think that, you know, oftentimes as administrators, you know, we, we were principals and we were teachers and so we, we, we like to make decisions, uh, based on our experience. Um, but I can tell you, um, and I'm not afraid to say this, that, uh, we, we had a bit of a debacle last year with preschool, just using this as an example. Sorry, Mrs. Chisholm that I'm bringing this up. Um, but you know, so we, we made some decisions about preschool, you know, and, and it didn't really work out in the right way for us. And so, so, so I'm not, I'm sorry, TK, it was more of a TK issue. Well, we did have a pre K issue, but preschool issue, but it was more TK. And so, so and we were making decisions, we were moving forward, we were trying to fix something that didn't work out right. And, you know, it was our TK and K teachers that reached out to Miss Chisholm and I and said, you know, hold on, hold on, hold on, will, will you just meet with us? Will you just meet with us? And, and, you know, I, I'm sure that, you know, Mrs. Chisholm feels the same way, like we, we had a really good meeting with people that are in the classrooms every day with our kids and they helped us design not only our policy, but, but, you know, helping us with protocols too. So because, because we're not in this to work in isolation and, and even though we're having to make decisions every day, it was a great reminder. And so how this is connected to your question is that we're already starting to have those conversations and, and so teachers have been reaching out and they've said, we can't expect, like we, you can't expect for somebody to sit, a five-year-old to sit in front of their computer, you know, for, um, you know, thirty minutes, an hour, that, that, there has to be really intentional planning for the age group. And so it, again, it's not a one-size-fits-all, it's not about just, uh, you know, this is how much instruction you have to provide. It, it really does matter to, to meet with the teachers, to talk about how best those particular students learn. I'm a, I was mainly high school teacher and so I'm, I'm not gonna pretend that I know. And I know that from that meeting that, that Laura Chisholm and I had with our TK and K teachers, that we really walked away, we need to do more of this, where we are actually having conversations with our teachers. And they're already starting to reach out and say, here's what, th- this is what could work, this is what's best. Um, they, they also know, teachers know also that they don't wanna put the parent in a difficult situation either as the third teacher because that doesn't work for a lot of students. So how do you move forward if somebody doesn't have the skills or age experience to advocate for themselves in front of a computer? And so those are the conversations. When, when I said we're having really good conversations, it's amazing. I, I've had conversations where teachers are in tears because they, they, they are working so hard to try to come up with something that's so different than what's happened in the past. Um, it, that, that's the connection that we need to make right now. It, it isn't the administration saying this is what a kindergarten first grade teacher needs to do. We need to talk with our teachers about what's best for our students.
Thank you, Dr. Brady. And I guess along those lines, you know, I, I understand and I just wanna reiterate that the, um, the social emotional aspect of learning and, and the environment that we're trying to create is, is not falling short. Um, you know, and it has escaped us. I think we're all very aware that this is an area that, you know, COVID nineteen really presents, um, some challenges with, but it doesn't mean that we've abandoned that mission, um, you know, in our efforts, in our educational efforts. And, and along those lines, I'm, I, you know, I'm looking at Mrs. Chisholm here. Um, I would assume the same effort, the same uh, approach is being, is being taken into consideration. We're looking at our special ed, um, students, of course. And, um, if there's anything you wanna add, please do so.
Uh, no, it's the same approach. Um, we are, we were having those conversations and we are designing our program to, to meet the needs of the students based on their I E Ps, um, so that we can, can have a continual program and, and, and have seamless integration with our, with our online piece. So. As well as our social emotional, emotional components. Um, we're, we are working to transform most of the P V I S curriculum and things, um, into uh, an online component so that we're able to implement that and have those supports and services in place for when we open school as well.
Thank you. Um, just so I just wanna let parents know that I really do appreciate all of the letters that we've received on this issue, as Mr. Margot said, and there's a vast, um, you know, there's, there's many opinions here and, um, you know, at the end of the day, we all want, we want for our child, but we have to take into account many of the the different, um, challenges that are before us and we're trying to really navigate this in the, in the best way that, uh, the most, most of our students and all of our students, I should say, are going to benefit from. So it's not by any means an easy task to complete. And, um, you know, your, your opinions are valid. And, um, there is not one-size-fits-all, um, by any means. And so, um, I do understand the, the emotion behind this and it's well, well-taken and, um, recognized. And, um, you know, I, I, we know, um, I have no, uh, judgment on that as personally. I, I think you're in your right to advocate for your child and we are, um, in the right, we are in our right as a board member to, to hear from you. That's, that's part of our, our role. So with that said, um, I wanna thank the staff and, 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 and everyone involved in this process. I know it's very cumbersome, it's difficult, it's challenging, but we will get there and I, I would hope that people understand that we have our best, the best intent, uh, moving forward always. Um, that's it. Thank you so much, uh, Dr. Brady, and I am going to move on with Board Member Krishanian, uh, City Board Member, um, and your report. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, I thought that when you called on me the first time, you were asking me to give my student board report, so that's what I said, but, um, can I just comment?
Yes, please.
Can I comment on Dr. what Dr. Reggie said now? So what I think is that, and what I've realized is most people, wait, let me start over, sorry. What, what I've realized is that I don't think that the board, all five board members agree on one thing as, as a agree on one thing like we are right now. I feel like everybody who is here feels like, um, this new option where students are at home and teachers are in the classroom is so much better because of all the difficulties that it gets rid of. And I feel like that just in itself is, just shows so much that everybody's in agreement here. Everybody is, who is educated on this knows that the hybrid model just wouldn't have worked as easily with two, wouldn't have worked at all with two cohorts. Um. And like me, my and I wanted to do the hybrid version, my parents wanted that for me and all my siblings. I'm pretty sure that everybody, all board members who have students wanted the hybrid version for their children as well. And it's just, it just shows that because me and all, all my colleagues have changed our views for this, like it shows that the hybrid version was just not as good as it, as good of an option that we could, we could bring and we could present for our, our students, you know. Just like Dr. Brady says, we're trying to make everything as easy as we can for everybody and I think that this new option is just fantastic. I can't say anything better about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Krishanian. Uh, we're going to now move on, um, to item seven of our agenda, business and finance. And so I will make a motion to approve the agreement between the City of Beverly Hills and Beverly Hills Unified School District for the provision, use, and maintenance of educational, recreational, and community facilities and programs for the fiscal years twenty twenty-one through twenty-two, twenty-three. May I please have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Any discussion?
Um, Mrs. Harke, I just wanna point out, we have to go back to human resources after this vote and pick up something that we didn't improve.
I did, I did skip over that. I apologize. Um, I will come back to that. Thank you for that, um, point of clarification, Mr. Margot. Um, so any discussion on that motion that has been made?
I just wanna thank the city, um, and our staff and the city staff and the liaisons for working so hard to get this agreement put together um, and completed in, in a pretty, uh, nice time, timeframe. So just, uh, personal thank you to everybody for your work in this process.
Thank you, Mr. Margot. Anybody else?
Okay, great. I just, uh,
This is a really important, um, this is a really important agreement and it actually was a really a great opportunity for the city and the school district to work together on something in, in really good partnership. And this is just, uh, it's one more way that we can demonstrate a different, a little change of, uh, change of, um, the way that we operate. Sorry.
And I just wanna just also, uh, just quickly, just kind of intervene for one second to offer my thanks to, um, you know, Tim Ellis and Wade Roach and myself, um, spent, you know, hundreds, if not a thousand hours, uh, working on this and it is so important to our district. Um, and it, it just, it goes to show you, um, you know, the relationship that we have with the city, um, Pam Chenault with the city, Patty Acuna, Jenny Rogers, um, and also uh, the support from Nancy Hung Coffee, the Assistant City Manager, and George Chavez, uh, as a city manager, um, has been really great. And it's, it's an important document to move it forward for three years and the partnership that we have. And so, um, I just wanna say, thank, you know, not only the city staff, but our own staff because, um, I, I, our staff has canceled vacations and we have, just to get it done. Um, every day is twelve and fourteen hours and this would not have gotten done if, if we just didn't make this also one of our priorities. And so, um, so I just wanna thank especially our team, um, Mr. Ellis and Ms. And so, so I just want to thank especially our team, Mr. Ellis and Mr. Roach, for getting us to where we are. I think it's a very good, good agreement moving forward for the next three years.
Thank you, Dr. Braggie. Mrs. Marcus or Mr. Spitz?
Yes. I agree with the comments that have been made. I want to say also that this, that this new contract reflects the support by our city council members, that their support for the school district. It's always been there, it's ongoing, and we appreciate it.
Okay. Mrs. Marcus?
Well, being glad, again, I only can ditto everything that was said before me, and thank that we have a wonderful document to work with for the next three years, and it's wonderful to know that we have this wonderful relationship with the city. And I'm looking forward to it continuing even after this is over, because it's very important for us, and it's very important for the city. Thank you.
Yes, I just really want to say thank you to you, Mrs. Marcus, Dr. Braggie, to Mr. Ellis, and to Mr. Roach for leading the way. I think this, and to Mayor Friedman, George Chavez, City Manager, and all the staff, and of course, the city council over at City Hall. I think this is the first time since I've been on the board that I saw such an expedited manner in trying to get this done on a timely manner, even though we are confronted with, again, COVID-19 challenges. And I was just really appreciative of the opportunity for us to have, you know, this exchange between both organizations, and to really come up with an agreement that was, I think is fair and helpful in these times of challenge again. So just want to recognize and express my gratitude to the City Hall, to City Hall, and of course, to the members of the team. Thank you. Okay. So with that, no further ado, let's call for the vote, and we'll do a roll call. So I'll start with Mr. Margot.
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I am a yes as well. That is a five-zero vote. Thank you.
All right.
And so, we're going to go back, just the point of clarification, we're going to go back to Human Resources. And just a minute, Mrs. Marcus, let me just, before you make the motion, let me just clarify for the board, we'll do that, and then we'll jump back to Business and Finance and move on to Item B under Business and Finance. So may I have your motion now, Mrs. Marcus?
I move to approve of the COVID-19 MOU with the OTBS.
I'll second.
Thank you, I will second that. Thank you, Mr. Margot. Okay. All those, and any discussion, please? No? Okay, call for a roll call vote. I'm sorry, Mrs. Marcus, did you raise your hand?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that's five-zero, thank you for that. So we're going to continue on the path of Business and Finance. May I please have a motion to approve the five-year deferred maintenance plan?
I will move to approve the five-year deferred maintenance plan.
I will second that. Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Any discussion?
I would just say that this is long overdue. This is something our district was in sore need of, and I'm really glad that the team can, and I'm sure our facilities team stepped in, Wade and everybody. We have been suffering without one of these, and it is a great, I hope people look at the plan. It's posted. Please avail yourself to what we're talking about here. It's detailed, it's intelligently written, and I'm very much in support of having this now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Margot. Anybody else, please?
Yeah.
Mrs. Marcus?
I just, I think that part of this that came about was when we hired the new head of operations. I think that, if I'm not mistaken, I would put a lot of the credit for getting this out there and getting it done, Mr. Haas, who was really instrumental in talking about a plan and getting it underway. And I really want to thank him and tell him how grateful I am that we are now not going to put off what needs to be done, and we are well on the way. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. I think this is, Mr. Spitz? Anybody else? Okay. Thank you. So I will just say that this is real progress here, and I think it's really important to highlight this, and, you know, this has been, I think it's been many, many years, as Mr. Margot said, before I was even on the board, that this, we used to have a maintenance plan, and it was taken off the table, and now it's reappeared again after many years of being needed, in much need. So I'm very, very happy to see this. And again, Mr. Haas has been a wonderful asset to this district, and I'm very pleased to see this before us. So thank you to everyone who has been involved in creating this plan for the district.
Mrs. Hager?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, yeah, there was, when I originally got on the board, there was certain amount of money put aside for deferred maintenance, but it wasn't a plan. It was a budget light item that was just a blank check, which was just quickly moved back into the general fund for educational needs, because we didn't have a plan. This is an actual plan, that's what's impressive about it. So I appreciate your comment, that it's not just a blank check of money, it's, we know exactly what we're going to be doing with this in the next five years.
Yes, and I think there was a plan when I started the district here as a parent of a kindergartner, and I think that was way before you were on the board, Mr. Margot, so no reference to you or anything like that. It was way before our time, but it's great to see this actually coming, come alive again. So I'm very, very pleased. This will be a roadmap for years to come. So with that being said, we'll call for a roll call vote again. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
I said yes, silent, yes, I heard you. Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes as well, and that passes five-zero. Moving on, please, may I please have a motion for the approval of the annual debt policy?
Policy report for the board debt issuance and management policy, 3470.
I will second that. Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? No. Okay. So, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Miss Mark, sorry. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Got it here, Mrs. Walker Schuman. We're having a hard time listening to this. Okay, Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you, and I'm a yes as well, that's five-zero. Okay. Next item on the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
I move for the approval of a resolution 2020-2021-001, targeting use of educational protection account funds for 2020-21.
Okay. I will second that. I think I beat you this time, Mr. Margot.
You did.
Okay, great. So here we go. Any discussion? I actually do have a question. Is there anything being done that is different this year because of COVID-19 and how we're, well, this is a resolution. So I know that we have money that comes through EPA, is there anything that is affected by it because of COVID-19, or no? Who's, no, okay.
So these funds come separate from our property tax dollars, and they have always been directed since we started to receive them to keep our class sizes low in kindergarten through third grade.
Yes, I'm aware of that. Just wondering if there was anything different happening this year with COVID-19? I don't think so, right? Okay, great. So, let's call for a vote. Mr. Margot?
Mrs. Hager, it's important that people understand what that was for, and I think that that was important, that Mr. Roach pointed out that that was what that's for, that it's to keep our class sizes low, which is something that we've always been very, very proud of in the K-3 arena, so I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So any further discussion or comments before I go into a vote? Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, thank you, that's five-zero, that carries. Okay, next.
For the approval of resolution 2020-2021-002, authorization of inter-fund transfers for the 2020 and 2021 fiscal year.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Margot, Mrs. Marcus. Okay. Any discussion? We'll call for a vote. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mar-
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that carries five-zero, thank you. Okay, I need a motion for the next item, please. Either-
I'll make a motion.
Are you all, go ahead, Mark, Noah.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. I'll make a motion for the approval of the resolution 2020-2021-003, authorizing temporary cash borrowing for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you.
Look at, Mel comes in from nowhere.
Okay. So any discussion? Okay. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Miss Marcus?
Yes.
And the vote carries, it's five-zero with my vote. Thank you. So I'll make a motion for the approval, resolution 2020-2021-004, temporary transfers from the school pools fund for the 2020-
I'll second.
Oh, and thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Thank you, and my vote is yes as well, that's five-zero, that carries. Okay, moving on.
I will move for the approval of resolution 2020-2021-005, delegation of administrative authority to process routine budget revision adjustments and transfers for the 2021 fiscal year.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus and Mr. Margot. Any discussion? Okay. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that's five-zero, thank you, that carries. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
I move approval of resolution 2020-2021-006, authorization of year-end appropriating transfers to be made by Los Angeles County Office of Education.
Can I thank Mr. Spitz? Do you want to second that, Mr. Spitz? I heard you.
I will second that.
Thank you. Okay. Any discussion? Okay. So, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Spitz, I'm sorry. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that carries, thank you. Okay, moving on. May I have a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make a motion for the approval of the lease-leaseback agreement to the Elredale campus seismic retrofit, oh, yeah, sorry, seismic retrofit and modernization project of Pro West Constructors.
Okay. I will second that. Is anyone here from Facilities or to answer questions in the event that there are any? I don't see anybody on the line.
Sierra, it's Sierra's here.
Sierra is here, okay, great. Any questions from the board?
I had asked, I had asked my question about how the overall lease-leaseback contract is coming to fruition for Elredale, and I got a wonderful answer that talked about what the phases were, and that we have phase three that we're voting on tonight, and phase four will be coming back to the board in August, and that is, looks like the final phase of the lease-leaseback for Elredale, so we're getting that finally completely tied up, which is exciting. Thank you.
I have a question. As we go forward with all of these particular agreements and so on, are we within the, working within the bond itself so that we're right on target in terms of money? Are we going to be in under the budget? How are we doing with all of that? I was curious to know if I see these huge figures, 37 million and some other numbers. My question is, are we on target with the money from the bond to make the corrections and the construction in Elredale and with the high school? Just a general comment.
Mrs. Marcus, I'll defer to Mr. Roach for that answer.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Sierra. Yes, trustee Marcus, we are currently still within our bond projections, and we do still have a contingency within our bond projection. So we're not concerned with these requests on the board agenda tonight. We would come to the board prior to having to exceed any of our budget amounts, so we would come to you before that.
Any other questions, board members? Okay, let's call for a vote. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman? Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that carries five-zero. Okay. Next item on the agenda under Facilities, I need a motion, please, for the ratification of professional services agreement with Clark Sykes Park to provide consulting services relating to lead, lead abatement for Beverly Middle, Vista Middle School, Phase Two enhancements project. May I have a second? That was lead, not lead. Okay. So, any questions? Mr. Margot, I think there's, are you, you have anything to say?
No, 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 no.
Okay, we're going to go for the vote, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, thank you. Next item on the agenda, may I have a motion, please?
I move for the adoption of resolution number 2020-2021-008, the urgency resolution to upgrade, repair, and abate areas of the swim gym.
I got the wrong one. And I just, no, you got it right, it's just 007. I think you're one-
He skipped one.
Right.
We could still vote on hers and go back.
Okay. So just for clarification, we're on Item D. It's okay, we're going to, since there's a motion, so we're just going to vote for that, and we'll go back to the one. Do I have a second for Item D, please? Who has a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Margot, thank you. We're good, any discussion? We're going to call for a vote, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
Miss, sorry about that. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes with the five-zero with my vote. We're going to go back to Item C. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion for the adoption of resolution 2020-2021-007, or 007 as we call it, emergency resolution for abandonment of oil wells.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Margot, thank you, Mrs. Walker Schuman. Okay, any discussion? We're going to call for a vote, then, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that carries five-zero. Okay. So.
I'll move approval and ratification of an agreement with AAA Network Solutions for telecommunications, single-mode fiber installation at Beverly Hills High School.
I will second that. Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Margot?
Are we voting?
Yes, please.
Yes. My vote is yes, stop.
Thank you. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. And I think we're getting a discount because we're just passing so many items under Facilities, right? We're gonna talk to Dawn about this. Okay, next item on the agenda. Please, may I have a motion?
I move for the adoption of Resolution Number 2020-2021-009, Emergency Resolution to Restore Communication at the Beverly Hills High School.
I will second that. Okay, thank you, Mr. Spitz. I'll give you that. Okay. Any discussion? Okay, so we are going to go for a vote. Mr. Margot?
Yes.
Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Yes.
Mrs. Marcus?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. Thank you. Okay, board policies. And so who is leading the discussion on this one before we?
Do we need a motion first?
We should get, we should get advisement because we have to craft-
I think we need to. I think, I think staff needs to lead the discussion, and then we will approve. Is this Mrs. Chisholm? Or who's, who's leading this?
I can't see the agenda. Is it, is it the permit?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's the continuation of existing inter-district attendance permits pursuant to Board Policy and Administration Regulation 5117 for the 2021 school year.
My apologies. When you said board policy, I thought it was something else. Yeah, so this is the annual cap that we have to set on our inter-district permits. Basically, the cap is set at zero because since we are basic eight district, we don't accept inter-district permits. At this time, we only have permits through, through the JPA agreement, which, and the CBA, which are our city employees and our staff, our Beverly Hills Unified Staff Members who can attend school there. We do have a few other permits that are just kind of, that linger from year to year that we are still phasing out. And we have those listed in there for you, but I'll go through them. I'll go through the numbers just so that everyone can hear them. For this year, we have one hundred and twenty-three district employee permits, thirty-eight city permits, two graduating with class. Those would be things like, we had a situation last year that, that, that we discussed where a student may move out of the district, but they are, we used to call, we used to call them senior permits, but they have maybe one semester left, and we allow them to graduate with their class. We have three environmental permit, six environmental permits, excuse me, nine legacy, ten homeless, and nine students under student services, and those would be our foster youth, youth students. So those are the numbers that I'm asking the board to approve.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. Any questions or comments from board? Mr. Margot?
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that we make the motion correctly. So are we moving to set the inter-district permit cap at zero? And that's it? We don't need to address the other numbers you gave us in the motion?
Correct. The other numbers are for the board's information as so that you have a total view of all the permits that we have in the district. But yes, this is strictly regarding inter-district permits, and we're setting the cap at zero.
Great, so I will make the motion to, for the district to set the inter-district permit cap at zero.
Okay, I will second that, but before we do that, I have a question. Anybody else have questions or discussion? Okay, Mrs. Marcus, you can go first.
Okay, thank you. The opportunity permits, that's been gone for so long. I thought that might now already be phased out. That's been gone for years and years, as I recall. I don't understand why we still have those, and could you explain what environmental, environment are? I mean, that's not one I've ever seen. Who are the environment?
Yeah, that one, honestly, Mrs. Marcus, I would have to look up. Those, these are, these are permits that were in place when I, when I arrived. They, we, we rolled them over every year, but as the kids age out, we, we reduce them. I don't know exactly what environmental permits are. And what was the other one? The legacy was your other question?
No, the opportunity. I know what legacy is. I mean, I know what, I know what they are. It's just that I know that we stopped opportunities so many years ago.
Yeah, we don't have opportunity anymore. We, we have graduate with class, and then we only have two. So opportunity is not on the list this year.
Those are the phase outs.
Correct, and we only have two next year, and, and we should be, they should be graduating this year, 2021.
What about the legacy?
We still have nine. We, and I could get the grades if you need them, but we still have nine as of today.
Well, according to this report, you said there were three. That's why I'm asking.
I'm sorry, I read, I read, you're right. I'm sorry, that's the code in, I'm sorry, it is three. I apologize. That's the code in Ares. There are two numbers side by side. We have three, so they're almost done. As you know, some of those started back in 2009, so we're, so they may have been young, and they're phasing out.
Like my grandchildren.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, Ms. Marcus, is that it? Or you have more? Okay, I have another.
Back to you, Mrs. Marcus, regarding environmental. I just don't know how that coded, what, because they, it could be a couple of different things.
Thank you, okay.
So, I remember asking about environmental permits a long time ago, and if my memory serves me well, I believe it had to do with students who were in another district, who maybe were felt threatened by a group of students who were being, who were bullied. They were either being bullied, or there was some type of a situation created in their environment that required them to transfer to another district. And so those are really rare and far, but they do happen sometimes. So I'm not sure when these occurred, because I don't think we had any when I asked the question. Yeah, okay.
Because I know that we actually, as a district, tried to do that for a student of ours about a year ago, and we could not get them into one of our districts in our surrounding areas. Basically, most districts have stopped doing that.
It's very difficult, yes. I would agree with that comment. My question is more about the student services permits, and I understand that those started in 2017. Was that something?
When I got here in 2017. They, they've been going on before that.
So could you tell us a little bit about that? I know I asked you, but I, I have had some questions about that, and I wanted to clarify.
Yes, those are our foster youth students who, who are living in the district or are placed in the district into foster homes in the district, and they attend our schools because they are placed through foster care services. And we average about eight or nine, up to ten, every year, and who they are changes from year to year, and they come in and out. I mean, sometimes they're here for one semester, sometimes they're here for the whole year. But we are required to accept them if they're placed because of their foster youth status.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm. That's it for me. Okay, so we have a motion before us, board members, so we're going to go ahead and now vote on that motion. The motion again is to, you wanna re, do you wanna reinstate the motion, Mr. Margot?
Yeah, I move to set the inter-district permit cap at zero.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Margot?
Yes.
We're voting, yes. Mr. Spitz?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker Schuman? Okay, Mrs. Marcus? Okay, thank you for that. Mrs. Marcus? Yes, I'm a yes. That's five zero. Thank you. We're moving on to communication from board members. Discussion, Mercer Island Student Letter to the Board. This was brought by Mr. Margot. Mr. Margot, the floor is yours.
Yeah, it was. This is a, it was done in the form of a petition. I saw somebody shared a copy on Facebook, and I thought that it was important to bring to the board and the district. Those of you that have read it, hopefully you all have, understand the motivation behind it is to bring lessons about privilege, bias, diversity, literature, racism, discrimination into the curriculum a little deeper. They felt that their school district, which is a predominantly white school district, did not do a good job of addressing these issues. I did follow up, and I, when I went on their school district's website, and the superintendent had sent a message out to the community that they are actively working on addressing the issue. I guess it had a pretty strong support from the public up there, but, and it was generated by students. I should say that. It was generated by students. So I thought this was something that our district lacked a little bit, and I had asked Dr. Bregy about it, and his honest response was that we, we have a lot of work to do in these areas. So I, I assume that was your response, Dr. Bregy, from?
Yes.
So, I'll, I'll turn it over to you for a second and try and-
Yeah, I, I just wanna say that, you know, it's, it's, it's relevant that we're having this conversation now, and I think that it isn't so much a matter of, you know, like something that's missing from the curriculum, so to speak. I think what's been missing is just, you know, the opportunity to, to have these difficult conversations, and, you know, that's, that's how kids learn best, is through these types of experiences and, and conversation and dialogue, and, and how things like, as you mentioned, whether it's white privilege, or whether it's bias, or whether it's, you know, equity, it, these are things that, that, you know, where it, it's not necessarily, you know, a piece of a curriculum, but it's embedded in, in everything that we do. And I think that, that some of the conversations that we've had as a cabinet is that we, we really need to find out where we are, and, you know, I'm gonna relate the kind of back to, you know, what I mentioned before about, you know, conversations with, with, with people that can share experiences with us, where we're hitting the mark and where we are not. I think that oftentimes we're placed in positions to come up with something that if, if, if we think that something's missing, I think we need to talk to our students. I think we need to have conversations with them about where, where are we missing the mark? If, if, if we are and when? You know, reaching out to not just our students, but our families as well. And so, you know, there's, there's a lot of thought and, and ideas going forward. There's lots of resources. But it's the kind of thing that, you know, let's, let's, let's take a look at what we're doing, how we're doing it, how we're, we're including people before we start making decisions about something that we think that we're missing. You know, let's have conversations with students to get their input on what, just, just like this letter. Because I think we could probably guess where we need some help and some, because I certainly think that we do. But I certainly don't want it to be an adult cabinet-driven decision, or even a principal decision, without talking to our students about what their experiences are and, and, you know, and, and where we're, we're missing. This is conversation.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Margot, for bringing this forward, and Mr., and Dr. Bregy for leading the discussion. I defer to board members if there's, this is your opportunity to, to weigh in.
Can we go to Mr. Kashanian?
Yes, of course. I'm not, I'm not, I wasn't done yet, but yes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't want to, because I went, I didn't want you to pass in, so.
Course not. Thank you for that, Mr. Margot. Mr. Kashanian, I was just gonna say that, I was just thanking Mr. Margot, and I wanted to thank Ms., Dr. Bregy for his comments and hearing that before we start changing things, we should probably really make an assessment of where we're at. But, Mr. Kashanian, your turn.
Yes, with regards to that assessment, and how like Dr. Bregy said, we wanna target students and see what their thoughts are. I think it's a great idea for me to, as a student board member, to reach out to students, maybe through a survey or a Google forum, something like that. We could discuss this further, but I think it's a great idea to just see where students' viewpoints are.
Thank you, Mr. Kashanian, for that. I so appreciate your comments. Mr. Spitz?
No, I agree with Mr. Kashanian's comment, and wish everybody a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Mrs. Walker Schuman?
Oh, Carrie, I'm sorry, my hotel wifi is spotty, so I'm trying, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
It turned off, okay. I turned off my camera because it seems to work better that way. I, I appreciate this letter being brought, Mr. Margot. I appreciate the input so far from everybody who's spoken before me. I think this is a really important issue. I think it's a really important piece, and I think if we're really gonna be honest, you know, just on a human level, a lot of times people don't know the biases that they carry with them. And a lot of times answering questions about those biases make people uncomfortable, and they answer what they think they're supposed to answer instead of what they truly feel. So I think that, you know, talking about bringing policy and talking about bringing curriculum that, that discusses bias, inherent bias, racism, antisemitism, is incredibly important and something we absolutely should look to do in the near future. I really do. I think especially now. We have, we had so many things going on that demonstrate what impact this type of bias has on the community, not just our own local community, but on a national scale. So I really, I, I'm really hopeful to, to see some good options come back, you know, for, for offerings for our students, because I think it will help prepare them for real, real life, you know, beyond the, the little bubble of Beverly Hills. That's all.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus.
Just a few comments. I agree with everything that's been said so far, which is my typical comment. But I would love to thank Jonathan for his comment about immediately picking up on the, I was, the first thing that went through my mind was somehow reaching out to the students with a survey. But I also think that we should reach out to the teachers to see what they're doing, or what's going on in the classroom right now. I think that that's an important thing, so that it, I think that once we can get a feel for what's in the classroom, what the students are thinking and so on, and not even maybe perhaps reaching out to the community and seeing what they're thinking might be something that might be to be thrown in. I, I think that one of the, we just need to assess what we need to do, see what we are doing, and take it from there. So I think it's, that's a great idea, and I would like to go forward with it. But we need to do a little background history and see what's happening.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Marcus, for that. I would just say that, you know, I, I've been very impressed truly with the, with the curriculum that our students receive as it relate, as it relates to social studies. I'm, I'm deeply impressed and how I've seen, just from my own children, the rich curriculum that is taught to them. But it goes beyond curriculum, as we know. It, it involves, you know, issues around access and how, you know, what are we doing as, as an institution to provide more access to our students in the areas, you know, having to do with college admissions and opportunities that perhaps we're not tapping into. There's a wealth of resources out there. I'm not saying that we're not doing it. I'm just saying that that is an area that is very real and really hits home when you provide these opportunities for access for students. It, it really is transformative. And so when we're assessing, I would like to really see, you know, what kind of things do we actually put into practice? What kind of tools do we provide, resources, without duplicating some of these? These are, these are, you know, very much available. I'm not sure how we do, as, again, as, as an institution, are we tapping into these resources in a creative manner and in a symbolic manner where, you know, people are, students are actually receiving services and support in these areas. So I think that's really important and key and center to the conversation, because that really is, again, transformative, and it's really where it's at. It's all about access. Mr. Margot?
Thank you. I, I kind of introduced the topic, but I didn't really opine on it yet. So what I wanted to share was, I wrote a question down, why is, is Black Lives Matter happening? You know, there were days and days of peaceful protests through our own city. It, it was very real. It became very real for all of us, and, and we read, our students read Richard Wright and Anne Frank and Eli Wiesel, and they understand some things about, about that through literature, from a literature aspect, and maybe they touch upon it in history. I know a lot of eighth graders really didn't get to get to that this year in American history. This is rooted in American history, this movement, and yeah, I, I personally would like to see, if it doesn't already, that our curriculum will address that question, and our students will understand the significance of how we got here as a country and what has happened, because it's unprecedented. Just like the COVID issue, this movement is unprecedented and a long time coming, and it's going to change things, and they're gonna be part of history-changing. Its statues are coming down around the country. We need to talk about these things. It's not, that is not in our textbooks now. Our textbooks were already written. That is not in the literature that our students are writing. They may touch upon it in essays. This is why I bring it up, because there's major events happening in our students' lives that need to be addressed, and I, I hopefully, and, and, and Mr. Kashanian will, will hopefully bring us some sort of semblance of, of what he can dissect from the letter that I, that I had posted, and ask his classmates what they know of this, what they really understand this. Because I, I don't think our students really understand what implicit bias is, and I think it's important that they do. And we all are guilty of it in some form or another, you know? So it's, it's, as, as one of my trustee association meetings, they did an entire evening on this subject. And this was before everything had started. So it's, it's there, and I think we need, as a school district, once again, taking the forefront, leading other districts, we need to make sure we address this in our district. So that's what I wanted to say, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we will then convene our meeting. Dr. Bregy, anything? So, we will then convene our meeting, Dr. Bregge, anything, and I'm happy that, again, a student Board Member, Mr. Kashanian, has offered to provide some lead, a lead in this, in this, in, in this issue, and, and trying to take a survey from our students and providing that information back to the Board at some point, when you're ready, we can continue this conversation, of course. I did want to say, I know that Cynthia Baseman and the PTA, and there's a group, a network of students, of community members who are working strongly to provide an opportunity for students to engage with other students of other districts, and we're gonna be hearing more about that, I understand, I've been made aware, so, and Dr. Bregge, I think you've been made aware of those conversations, and so we look forward to hearing from, more about those opportunities that will be coming, and provide, be provided to our students in the future, in your future. Okay, with that being said, I just wanna say that our future Board Meetings are going to be taking place on July 28th at 5:00 p.m., and the one after that will be August 11th, 5:00 p.m. as well, and we are gonna be having those both through a conferencing environment similar to today's.
The August 11th? August 11th?
Yes, July 28th and August 11th. Okay, I'm sorry, Mrs. Marcus.
Their anniversary.
Well, happy anniversary. Okay, so with that, we are going to adjourn our meeting, thank you all for participating today, thank you, Mr. Carey, for providing this venue for us, and K-Bib, of course, and to everyone who participated, have a great evening, good night.
Thank you, Bailey.
Okay, thanks, everybody.